For today and the hearing schedule of the ordinances to be for you to be aware of, of the critical timeline that we have for the adoption process. These items are outlined in the staff report, and we'll go through them in that order, as well as how they are listed in Attachment A through the engrossment concepts attachment. The main task on the agenda today is to discuss any potential changes to the proposed ordinances for Planning Commission consideration. So at the last meeting, we talked about considering map change requests, which would be changes to ordinance number 901, and issues related to changes in the standards of the proposed language for ordinance number 902. These items are listed in Attachment A, and we'll be going over each of these topics for discussion in that order, and then pause for your discussion and consideration for potential changes. And we include also a recap of what's proposed, and then staff's kind of rationale for proposing the particular standard, and then your option for recommending changes. To focus on the issues raised at the last meeting and the various questions some of you have had, we have grouped the topics based on their order in the Community Development Code, Significant Natural Resource Section, to give you a framework to have your discussion deliberations and possible motions and votes on the potential changes. We've provided you with a hard copy of the presentation, so you'll have a template to work with from your motions, and then we'll track these changes as we progress through the presentation. At the end, there'll be a final vote on the ordinance itself on any changes that you may recommend to the board. So the next step or stop for ordinance number 901, 902 to the Board of County Commissioners is the hearings before the Board of County Commissioners, who will adopt, reject, or change the ordinance. This slide shows the two alternative paths with the scheduled dates depending on the action that the Board takes. We wanted to provide you with the schedule to illustrate the timeline we're working from to get these ordinances before the Board, and how important it is for the Planning Commission to make a decision on the ordinance today, so that the Board will have the recommendations at the first hearing and be incorporated into our staff report. The work session on the ordinance is next Tuesday, September 10, and our first hearing on the ordinance is October 1 for both of the hearing alternatives. The Board could order engrossment on October 1, or continue that decision to the next hearing, October 15. If the ordinances are engrossed, we must refile and renotice at least 10 days before the hearing. An engrossment requires two hearings, a day and a night hearing, and at this, and these dates kind of show the two alternatives that we could be working from in the future. So at this time, we'll pause for any public testimony that may, that people may have signed up to speak on ordinance number 901 and 902 before proceeding further.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public testimony?
We did have one individual signed up for public testimony online. We have no one signed up for public testimony here in person. I don't see the individual who had signed up in our attendees list, however.
Within the discretion of the Planning Commission, if you want to reopen the public hearing, you take the one witness testimony, you certainly have the power to do that.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, give the person a chance to testify if they're, they're under a different name. And if anyone else would like to. Jim, can you state?
Hello?
Hi, Jim, can you state your name and address for the record? You'll have two minutes to testify.
Jim Long, Chair of CPO 4M, 8400 Southwest Hemlock, Tigre, Portland. I am speaking on behalf of, I'm Chair of CPO 4M, but I'm also on the CCI and the SNR Subcommittee. But I really want to speak here for the CPO 4M. We had a meeting last week, and it got unanimously approved to further some comments to you. CPO 4M opposes the proposed ordinances 901 and 902 as written. These proposed ordinance need engrossing before possible adoption. It was maybe 30 years, or 10 years ago, that, after a unanimous approval, CPO 4M members asked for a letter to be sent to the county asking for tree code protection. Apparently, Washington County Department of Land Use and Transportation Staff was asked not to respond to our request. Real estate and property ownership is an investment with risks. Maximizing profit is not guaranteed. We suggest that deeds for real estate with SNRs be improved. SNR location and statement should be on a deed. Approvals will follow the land. To alleviate or prevent future legal issues for Washington County and property owners that propose 901 and 902, or other codes, do not include now, but should include something for improved deeds, perhaps with remonstrances. Washington County needs to protect, as far as trees, Washington County needs to protect Oregon white elk specifically, as has the State of Washington and the cities of Salem, Corvallis, and at least one other city in the valley. Yes, Oregon white trees are important, but so are other native trees supporting wildlife habitat that should be included for protection in 901 and 902, including ponderosa pine, Pacific willow, and cottonwoods. Cottonwood trees along riverbanks and creeks provide stability. Pacific willow trees provide stability to banks of wetlands and creeks, and provide habitat for the willow flycatcher and food for beavers. Ponderosa pine trees are habitat in drier areas and support nesting birds. Shrubs, ferns, and undergrowth are very important for wildlife also. Has the Department of Fish and Wildlife been involved, not just in review of these ordinance, but will they be involved in fish and wildlife species protection for the future development applications? With increasing climate change, please help make the entire county, not just urban county, a better place to live, including for wildlife. Many species of wildlife are now declining, in particular, as much as 2/3 of bird populations are declining, including the rufous hummingbird. Related to 902, CDC 422 6.2 states that building is not allowed in SNR 422 8.3, allowing roads, public transportation facilities, installation, maintenance, or construction of the following utilities: sanitary storm sewer, water lines, electric communication signal lines, and gas distribution and transmission lines.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Your three minutes has elapsed.
I'm a CPO Chair. I thought I got five minutes.
Oh. Okay. Please continue. I apologize.
Okay. These should not be allowed in significant natural resource areas. Areas outside the UGB, significant natural areas outside the UGB. We realize this ordinance only applies to residential, but not commercial development within the UGB, but the verbiage in this section is currently not clear and objective and must be removed. It must remove this section to comply with dictated by Oregon law. This particularly relates to Goal 5. The draft Economic, Social, Environmental, and Energy, ESEE, analysis for upland wildlife habitat in this report uses a series of tables to consider trade-offs within six conflicting use areas. Are these trade-offs going to be subjective decisions? We recommend that the cities with qualified inventory updates be incorporated into the county mapping process. Exhibit 1, Page 1, Policy 10. It is the policy of Washington County to protect and enhance significant natural resources. There are some vagaries in the language, balancing the need for housing, flexibility and mitigation opportunities, community livability. And then in the summary and findings on Page 2, the relative value, and whose value is this, of these natural areas, is this wildlife increases as surrounding land is converted from rural to urban uses. Now Exhibit 1, dated June 18, Page 2H, compliant with local, regional, state, and federal requirements, for example, the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, for example. On April 9, at 7:00 a.m., six chainsaws were heard cutting and disturbing trees and destroying underbrush, apparently for clean water services. Clean water service contracts were not following that federal law in a state park during breeding and mating season. 911 should have been called for this violation. Clean water service has much changed its policies to prevent this from happening again. Their work should have been done in autumn. In a world of habitat restoration, no one goes in this time of year, but rather correctly in late fall when plants are dormant. The shrub layer needs to be protected. The majority of birds and wildlife are still gone from that area and now can't be heard.
Thank you, Jim, for your testimony. It's been five minutes. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Okay. Well, I have more, and I'll submit that later, but I only have a couple more paragraphs. Thank you.
Thank you for submitting your written testimony. We will look at it when we receive it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clerk, is there anyone else who has indicated they'd like to testify?
Yes, we have an additional hand. Thank you, Mr. Long. Jack Newman, please go ahead and please state your name and address, then proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Devon Zastro Newman. I think my child logged in under my account last time. I'm at 1390 Northwest 113th Avenue in Portland, just on the edge of Cedar Mill there. And I just wanted to say that we got caught up in this lawsuit. We were well into the permitting process, and it was not clear that this SNR lawsuit was happening. It was extremely frustrating. We're waiting to try to do a remodel that was instigated essentially by the pandemic and needing to stay at home. What I would like to request, after reviewing all of the information, is that for homeowners who are seeking to do some kind of renovation or a permit, that there be a way, some kind of posting of clear guidelines for the requirements. I'm a lawyer. I can read legalese. It's still confusing what exactly steps need to be taken, and for this to be accepted by the public and adopted by the public, it would be particularly helpful to have some sort of a consolidated homeowner guide that then references the individual provisions so that people can start to wade their way through the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others?
Would anyone else in the audience like to communicate on this matter? Seeing no hands, we can move ahead. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Bovat, should we close the public hearing?
You should reclose.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Okay. At this time, we will close the public hearing on ordinances 901 and 902. And Michelle and Teresa, if you'd like to continue with the staff report, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We're first going to tackle ordinance number 901. That's the changes to the community plan maps and community framework plan. So as we talked about last time, we've received a few requests to change the habitat mapped on a number of properties in the Significant Natural Resource Inventory. Our consultant and staff will be looking at those based on the criteria outlined in our draft habitat report. Any approved changes to the inventory will then be reflected in the community plan maps, and then those would be recommended for engrossment. If we receive changes, change requests after that date, August 31, we plan on preparing an omnibus map amendment in late 2025 to incorporate the approved changes to those inventory maps that are adopted, and also those that are adopted through the Cooper Mountain Planning Process that's still in process. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number 901 to the Board of County Commissioners with engrossment to include map change requests received by August 31 that are consistent with the criteria used to develop the inventory. And at this time, I'll pause for your discussion and perhaps deliberations or any questions you may have on this issue.
Commissioner Monte Blanco.
Just a quick question for a homeowner who, let's see, they get their details in later this year, it gets part of the, sorry, it's part of the engrossment for next year. Are they in like limbo for a year around like changes they can make?
Well, they could apply for map correction process through our code, through the development code, or if they had, through, Section 422 includes those change requests, so.
So it's not like they have to wait and.
Right. They could proceed under the current map guidelines and then request a map correction through that process. This would be changes to the inventory maps and the community plan maps, kind of late, that wouldn't go into effect until 2025. So there's a viable path for any applicant to proceed just under the same, the same mapping, and then they could propose a map correction with the requirements that are outlined in the code section.
So the idea is that we would do, do it for free for people who maybe didn't get in, or they realize over time, oh, this is happening, and maybe they hadn't realized it. But as Michelle mentioned, there is a provision in the proposed regulations that allow for a map correction. So if someone wanted to proceed with the development and weren't able to because of the mapping, they could go under that provision instead of waiting for us to do this kind of cleanup.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaiser.
So this procedural question on existing applications that are in place that are moving through the process. On an existing application where perhaps they were counting on the existing map, and the map is going to change with this, how does that affect them in the middle of that process?
So if there's a land use approval already in place, a preliminary land use approval, that's good under the earlier mapping that was done. And so during the time that they're proceeding with their construction or final plating, that's all under the earlier mapping rules. Is that what your question was?
Well.
And that's how they would proceed? If that application, there's a certain amount of time that that land use approval has to be completed, those would still stay in place?
I think what I'm concerned about isn't those who have an approval in place, but those who are in active pursuit of the approval, which, there's another trigger for that, which would be an application, I believe. I also know, in fairness, I also know that sometimes those applications just go away. People decide not to do them. But I'm trying to figure out what we do for folks that, and what I'm thinking of, you guys hear is this. You get in the middle of developing a piece of land, you're halfway through that process, you've had a decision on how many lots you think you're going to be able to get for that approval, and if the map has changed before you got your approval, how are we protecting those folks? Or can we?
Well, there's provisions in the code that it goes into effect at the date of the adoption of the ordinance, so that if the lot was approved by the date of the ordinance.
And just a clarification, you are correct. The goalpost rule applies as of the date of application. So not date of approval, but date of application. So they would be subject to the regulations in effect at the time they applied.
So that was.
And the mapping at the time that they applied.
Okay. That's what I want to double check.
Yeah.
But I would also like to know, where do we make sure that we're, it's probably a small group, right? We're probably talking 10 applicants or something. Maybe it's less, right? But how do we make sure that they know they're good to go with where they're at currently because they've got their application in? Because obviously that could throw things backwards, right, for somebody in process? That's really what I'm looking at.
Right. So applicants, I think for the most part, they do know the goalpost rule, and we have talked with some developers. I think if you're a developer, you know. If you are an individual, you may not know that. But it is the case with our whole code, that if anything changes in the code, it's, or in the mapping, it's what was in effect at the time that you applied.
Does it help hurt otherwise if we reconfirm that in any way, just as part of the decision at all? Not because they couldn't just review this tape and see that you're saying that, I understand that. But does it hinder that if that was an engrossment included, or?
We don't have that in our code for any other sections. It's just state law that establishes the goalpost rule for all of our code. So I think we wouldn't, we wouldn't put it in just for this section.
Osterity.
Because then it would sound like, oh, that only applies to this section versus all of the code. It's the case for all of the code.
Okay. Thank you.
Do commissioners have any other questions? Mr. Bovat, I also wanted to ask if we needed a motion to close the public hearing?
I don't think so. You closed it.
Okay.
Yeah. And if I could just add, I would agree with what you heard from Teresa. I would be very reticent to recommend our Board of Commissioners insert state law as applicable to only just certain sections within the code by creating at least an implied ambiguity that it doesn't apply other places. And I also just have, I'm reticent to repeat state law in county code, because state law can change, and things can change, and I generally try to avoid recommending such things.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Done.
Oh, you're good? Good. Okay. Let's continue with the staff report. Thank you.
Actually, one sec. Just from.
Yeah. Commissioner Kaiser.
I apologize. Just from a procedural standpoint, and with how many engrossments we may have here, would staff prefer that we take a look at each possible engrossment and stop and pause and make a decision on engrossment rather than do it all at once at the end?
Right. So, for example, this map change request, if you're in favor of the language, or you'd like to discuss this and maybe call for a motion to see if there is a majority of you that feel in favor of this, we could do that at this time. So under each section, I intend to pause.
And allow them.
And let you discuss, and talk about and deliberate which particular, and make your motions according to your position.
Can I ask one other procedural question? In terms of the terminology you want for each engrossment, is it just a motion based on, I move an engrossment that includes the Planning Commission or the staff recommendation? Or what exact language do you want for that engrossment?
If I can interrupt here, so on that slide, sorry, if you go back to the one you were just at.
I'm trying.
No, this one here.
Yeah. Oh, Teresa wants that one. Kathy wants the other one.
So this one, at the bottom of this one, because this is ordinance 901 versus 902. So for 901, this would be the language that we would recommend, that the Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance 901 to the Board with engrossment to include map changes. So that would be the language. That other slide will be for kind of little sub-motions to change 902.
But as I understand, you were asking for what.
That's exactly what we've got here. I just didn't realize we wanted to just do that format. So I just didn't want to come up with the wrong format if I made a motion.
That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaiser.
I'd be happy to make a motion if that is helpful.
I think we need to do deliberation first. So Commissioner Will.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard a motion. I was going to second the motion. Can we do deliberation after the motion?
Yes. You would proceed with each motion, and then you would have a second, and then deliberation on each motion, and then a vote on each motion, and we'll just take them one by one as essentially proposals.
Okay. Let's, Commissioner Monte Blanco.
Yes.
I have a readout, though. I would like to make a motion. We recommend approval of ordinance number 901 to the Board of Commissioners with engrossment to include map change requests received by August 31 that are consistent with the criteria used to develop the inventory.
Do we have a second?
I would like to second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Monte Blanco and Commissioner Will. Deliberation. Commissioner Frye.
Thank you. If you can grant me just a brief moment here, I was going to save this for afterwards when I thought we were going to deliberate after this, but now I feel like I need to interject it here. Just going to put out my potential conflict of interest disclosure. I work for a local residential builder-developer. Company has projects with approvals that are not subject to the proposed regulations, but we do not currently have any projects that will be restricted by the changes. I'm also on the Board for the Home Building Association of Greater Portland and the Board for the Energy and Environmental Building Alliance. I'm not representing either of these organizations or the company I work for in my service on the Planning Commission. Just sharing the information because it speaks to my commitment to housing and my concern for the environment. I'm also a parent. I want my kids to have a beautiful world for their future and a place to live. These hopes exist in tension sometimes. We have limited natural resources, and we have an undeniable housing crisis. I'm not sure my children will be able to achieve homeownership in the greater Portland metro area because of how limited and expensive housing has become. I also know that it won't be much of a place to live if we don't preserve some of the natural beauty. So all this to say, I'm conflicted, like I imagine most of us are, but I don't have an actual conflict of interest. That was all I wanted to add there before we get into deliberations. Thank you for giving me a moment there.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaiser.
I support this motion. I think the most important thing to me was just making sure that that small group was covered, and to my mind, just by having it on public record here and talking about it, that doubly covers it. So I'm fully in support of it.
Well, I wanted to add that Commissioner Frye, I think you said it wonderfully, and I am also in favor for when we cast our vote. So are there any other comments from commissioners? So shall we do a roll call vote at this time?
Thank you. Commissioner Frye?
Yes, to approve that engrossment recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg? Commissioner Whipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Will? And Acting Chair or Vice Chair, Maury B. Do? Thank you. It is unanimous. We have seven in favor.
Thank you. Staff report for ordinance 902. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to ordinance number 902, the Community Development Code changes related to the Significant Natural Resources. And at the last meeting, two issues related to the proposed upland wildlife habitat requirements found in Section 422-4 related to exemptions from the standards. The first one was a concern about the exemption of tree removal requirements for construction, installation, and maintenance of public parks, utilities, and transportation facilities. And then the second one is about the exemptions from the upland wildlife habitat standards and requirements based on lot size. So on the first one, the standards include an exemption for park utilities and transportation facilities to, to, sorry, to transfer the standards, the standards include an exemption for parks, utilities, and transportation facilities. Sorry about that. And those were transferred from the standards in the development code from the design elements that were in the current community plans that described those exemptions. So this was codifying those design elements that were in the community, in our community plans. It also implements the allow decisions for utilities and transportation facilities in the ESEE report, which found that the benefits of the essential services and efficiencies about connectivity outweigh the potential negative environmental impacts. We therefore do not recommend making any changes. However, if the Planning Commission is concerned with this exemption for public parks, utilities, and transportation facilities, you could recommend refinement of the exemption to narrow its scope found in that section. narrow its scope found in that section, 422-43 point B.C. So, I'm going to pause here for questions or discussions on that exemption.
Commissioner Kaiser?
So, in this particular instance, from a deliberation standpoint, before we do any motion, I think my concern here is we're implementing a clear and objective standard, is the whole point of this, on private property owners, developers, whoever's going to use land within the county. It is really easy to allow the decision for utilities and transportation facilities in the Gold 5 E.C. report to just say, well, this, you know, the benefits of essential services, connectivity, and vehicle trips outweigh potential negative environmental impacts blanketly, right? From my perspective, not that I want to bog down utilities or anybody else, but I'm not exactly sure why they should be exempt from the process. I'm all for expediency. I mean, I like expediency. I'd like to see expediency on the private side, too. But I don't think, from my perspective, that I'm in favor of pushing aside this rule for utilities or transportation without at least consideration.
As a point of order, what would the impact be? If we recommend refinement of this, how does it impact the timeline?
It depends on what refinement you would recommend and whether that would change the decision in the E.C. analysis. So, in that analysis, it did find that the benefits to economic, social, and energy outweighed, from the connectivity, from the utility provision, from the parks, would outweigh the environmental protection. If you wanted to refine that in a way that did then subject those to the regulations, that would change that decision to a lightly limit or to a somewhat limiting. So, we would need to probably revise the E.C. report and to relook at the justification for that. So, it could affect our timing a bit to do that.
Right. So, in some cases, if you said, let's, if utilities weren't exempt, then that would mean the power lines or different issues would need to come in and follow the community development code process for the tree inventory and the permitting requirements, for example. Or for the parks, if parks would need to come in like a regular property owner with their proposed tree removal permits or things like that. So, it would be subject to all of the same standards. So, depending on which particular activity you wanted to narrow, that would kind of depend on the length of time in the ESE to kind of reevaluate your considerations.
And there, oh, sorry, there also may be difficulties in being able to meet the requirements because the utility has a utility corridor that they can put their facilities in, and if they need to take out trees to do that, they don't have another place on the site to replace those trees. And the same if a county is doing a road improvement. We have the road right of way, but that's it as far as the area that we could do any of that mitigation. So, that in part is reason for that. And I don't, Aaron, did you want to?
No, I think you answered that just fine. Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Teresa, that was so helpful. Thank you. That clarified so much. Maybe it wasn't just me, but maybe Commissioner Kaiser brought this up because I was curious and I was struggling with this based on my values and, you know, yeah. So, I was really struggling with this, especially with the utilities and, you know, I'm team parks in my, in every other aspect of my life, so, and still. So, but I really appreciate what you just said, Teresa, around kind of the options for mitigating these specific things. So, while I was leaning towards an engrossment, now I think I might be leaning not. But I really appreciate that so many people gave feedback on this item, that community, we got public testimony about this item, and I so appreciate Commissioner Kaiser's point of view and Teresa, you just helping make a lot of sense of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Frye?
Thank you. My main question on this one was public parks, honestly. I could understand the reasoning for utilities and transportation facilities, but I was having a hard time understanding why public parks should be exempt from tree removal more than a development application or a homeowner. Are there examples? Parks are great, but I think trees make a lot of sense in parks, actually. So, can you, can staff provide any examples of maybe why public parks should be exempt?
Well, it's not really that they might not consider parks, I mean, consider trees in parks. Like THPRD has plenty of natural resource experts and they rely on their resource specialists to decide the appropriate trees and native trees and all of their policies are through kind of that process that they go through with their own experts. So, it doesn't mean, it just gives them discretion to do their park planning according to the type of park that they might want to put in a particular area and the type of landscaping and trees that would be there. So, the county wouldn't have additional standards in place that they would be exempt, you know, to review their proposals.
Commissioner Rosenberg, did you have something?
Thank you. I want to make sure I'm fully understanding this. If there is a valid reason for the utilities to apply for an exemption because they don't have another location that they could replant, this is the direct corridor for them, that pathway exists in the language, right? Just like any homeowner who was applying for an exemption, our utility companies could apply for an exemption for a specific reason?
Well, I don't see that. The exemptions that we have are for that particular use. They could, if the tree was hazardous or diseased or dying, sure, that would fall under that exemption like a private homeowner. But in the case it might not be one of those exemptions, they would, that's available for them. If they were standard trees, for example, then there's other processes like a type, like the tree points and the mitigation that way or the 30%. And so, Teresa's point was, well, they might have such a narrow pathway that there's not area to mitigate the amount of trees that would need to come out or to replant, for example. That might be a challenge with a narrow right of way or circumstances for some of that alignment. Anything to add, Kathy?
Yeah. And perhaps I didn't follow the question, but I think the exemption for those uses, for utilities, for example, does not require that they, as worded, does not require that they look at alternative locations and avoid the impact. It's a blanket exemption to the removal of trees to, for that particular use or activity. So, if the corridor, it's a new corridor for a power line and it, you know, they need to remove trees, they don't go through the standard process to mitigate those trees. So, it is not, it is, it is an exemption for that activity. It does not require any, like, request for, like, it's not as though they have to say, we're going to apply for an exemption and demonstrate that this is the only path forward for that utility. So, does that answer your question?
That's what I wanted to fully understand is...
Okay.
This is a full carte blanche. If I own a piece of property that I can't do anything on, I could sell it to the power company and they could just cut down all the trees. Is that accurate?
Well, I mean, they would have to be installing utilities. Their ownership alone would not necessarily result in that. But if they were installing, if there was a utility line that needed to be installed through that corridor, instead of saying, oh, you need to go around the upland habitat area, you could go through the upland habitat area and remove the trees within that corridor for that line. Yeah. So, and the reasoning was, you know, that, again, the ability to kind of go around or to mitigate within the habitat within the site is really limited. And of course, for existing corridors, the need to maintain a clearance for trees away from power lines ultimately protects remaining trees from fire, right? We don't want to see a forest fire. So, I think we were looking at that in the ESE and also in kind of current practices and what the code currently exempts and in the way of, you know, currently allowing parks, transportation facilities, so forth, as permitted uses, maintaining that, thinking about that, why that still makes sense. And so, that's the conclusion of the ESE. However, as Michelle points out, if there were interest on the planning commission of changing that or narrowing that, that's the discussion.
Commissioner Frye?
Just to follow up on that, I'm less about the power company wanting to buy the land, but if, now if the park wants to buy the land, they can do what they please with it what the private property owner couldn't. If somebody wanted to put a swing set in their backyard and cut down some trees to do that as a private property owner, if they had the overlay on it, they would be restricted potentially from doing so. But the park could come in and clearcut the place to put a swing set on it, and it would be somehow acceptable. I guess I'm, that's one where, from my opinion, as we discuss this, I don't know how you exempt the parks, but you subject private property owners and developers from it. I just don't see the same argument that you can make for utilities and transportation.
So, part of that is the public purpose of the parks, so it's not a private individual's swing set, it's a swing set available for everybody. And so, I think that's the idea with the E.C. analysis was balancing the human purposes, the other purposes with the environmental purposes and kind of weighing that and saying, in this case, parks with...
Yeah. And they're the stewards of the open space areas and that they are kind of the managers of that for the, to see what is the public purpose in each one of those. And for the swing set example, it wouldn't be that that activity is restricted, it would just, you'd need to mitigate for the trees that you removed, perhaps, if you didn't fit into all these other little exceptions that we have for the tree mitigate...
A small, random example, but I think, I think giving a parks district or public parks, just immunity from following the rules that developers and private landowners need to follow, that feels dangerous to me. I just don't, I don't see the, there, yeah, I love parks and I love trails through parks and things like that, but parks should be easily the ones that can retain the trees and work within the habitat better than anything. So, I think that they should, yeah, they should just be subject to the same requirements as anybody else at that point. That's, again, that's my opinion. Not sure if other people on the commission will agree with that or not, but it feels like, it feels like an unnecessary carve-out to me.
Thank you. And we have a lot of questions. We'll go Commissioner Kaiser, then Commissioner Monte Blanco, then Commissioner Will, and then Commissioner Rosenberg. And then maybe after that, we can consider a motion if it feels appropriate at that time.
So, one thing that's not being mentioned here is the ability for a utility or transportation to use off-site mitigation for those trees as well. There's nothing that stops that from happening. I mean, from my perspective, obviously, we're talking about S and R regions, right? These are limited regions that we're talking about and we want the trees to be there. However, it doesn't mean that they can't be subject to, if they've got to knock out a white oak and everybody else has to take on the points and figure out how to work those points, there's no reason they shouldn't be able to, too. There's ways to make that work within a narrow corridor, even if you can't fit it in the corridor. There's other options, right? Fee and loo to you to put it somewhere else. They don't have to do fee and loo?
We don't have a fee and loo provision or an off-site mitigation provision here, so all mitigation needs to occur on the site.
Perhaps we should for situations like this because from that perspective, at least they're going somewhere. I don't like the idea of off-site mitigation being used for everything. That's a problem, right? But in these situations, look, if everybody's got to pull together to keep these S and R regions, or to save these S and R regions, I don't see why the public should get out of it either. I think everybody should be on that.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
I think I was going to say something very similar to Teresa around public benefit of these various entities, whether it be transportation, parks. I think where I originally was thinking about this idea and kind of got stuck is the cost. And I was thinking about TRIMED and TRIMED doesn't have all the resources that they need, so that's kind of, just to be transparent about the values that are shaping what will ultimately be a vote. But I do want to mention that I have yet to meet a parks district that doesn't want to save every single tree that it can. So, I certainly don't speak on behalf of every parks district, but, and I'm mindful of the public benefit of a park. A nature area is quite a bit different than a backyard playground.
Commissioner Will?
Thank you. So, I appreciate what all the other commissioners are saying. I think that some of the comments I wanted to make are being made and, such as the cost concerns, you know, if you build a road, maybe you already own the right of way and you're going to widen the road to add sidewalks to get, you know, a better pedestrian environment along. We have a lot of county roads that have poor pedestrian environments. The costs associated with that road widening, you know, is really what's preventing it from happening more often. And so, if we require transportation, for example, facilities to mitigate that tree that's on the shoulder of an asphalt road with no sidewalk and there's no place to put it, that's one of the things the staff was bringing up. But if you had to, you know, buy an easement from your neighbor in order to plant the mitigated tree, that just increases the cost of these road improvements. So, I think that the comment about, you know, the trade-offs of adding more regulatory burden onto park, utility, and transportation improvements, you know, it's a trade-off. And I think that the added costs and the bureaucratic process is not worth an engrossment. So, I don't support an engrossment on this process. And I think also, you know, the utility and transportation usually have an easement or a public right of way. Those are probably the ones that are most constrained. So, I appreciate my fellow commissioners', you know, concern about parks and thinking about how a park has more space. They should be able to find an area. But, you know, if you buy an acre of land for a new park and, you know, you're going to build a baseball field or something like that, basketball courts, you know, those things need to be wide open and clear and safe for kids to run and not hit a tree or, you know, for the games that are designed to be played at parks to work. And so, you know, there's not always enough room on the property to mitigate the trees removed. So, I think they are still constrained, and so I think it's appropriate to have them exempt. But I do want to reinforce that most parks go through, you know, a planning process. It's not a top-down process where some parks planner says, you know, I've decided to clear cuts this entire site and build a soccer field. There's usually a community process. So, I'm not concerned about the abuse of this by the utilities, transportation, and parks. And so, you know, I really think it's good that we've been asking these questions and taking the time. And I know there's a couple other questions maybe lingering out there, but I think we should either make a motion and, or move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosenberg?
I do perfectly want to tie in to what Commissioner Will said, but it's more on the questioning side because I want to understand Twalton Hills Park and Rec's process. My understanding, is there a standalone government agency that does not report to the county? Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
That is true.
Do we have any jurisdiction over them? Can, can we make a decision that, that controls their decision-making process?
So THPRD park, parks do need to apply to the county. We do have an approval process, but if they aren't subject to these requirements, then the approval process would not include a review of significant natural resources. But it would include all of the other things in our development code, parking and setbacks and the other types of requirements for access and all of that. So, yeah, but we, they, there is a separate board that THPRD has, and they are our primary park provider. The county provides a tiny little park for a small area, but for the most part, urban unincorporated county is served by THPRD.
Okay. Do they have a planning commission of their own?
They have a board of directors that are elected, and Commissioner Monte Blanco serves on that.
Okay, so there is, as Commissioner Will's mentioned, he said there's usually a hearing process, a public hearing process, but I wanted to make sure.
They would, they would go through the county's hearing process. They also do their own planning process that involves the community. So for the most part, any park, they will, they have property, they will do a process, their own process with the community and invite engagement and talk about what kinds of facilities might be wanted there and that sort of thing.
I would prefer those conversations to include the, the resource conversation. I would prefer to keep the Parks District responsible for the same assessment that the public does.
I was just going to throw in that we've won awards for our inclusive thought-making, thoughtful planning processes. There's an amazing planning team. I think they submitted a letter at the last meeting who are, who engaged with the county, the city. Yeah, just a wonderful resource.
Commissioner Frey?
I would, I just think it's important to say that, that parks don't have to, don't have to buy land in areas that, that if we're trying to protect this significant natural resource, we're placing such high value on it, parks don't have to buy the land there or select the land there. Just like a developer is basically being told that they can't buy that land and they can't use that land as they wish, the park can buy land in other areas that's not, that's not subject to this overlay. I just, I still really can't wrap my head around why it would be different for a park to be able to go in and put soccer fields or different things in there. If they want to do a nature park, absolutely would make sense. It'd be a great use of some of these significant natural resource areas, and there is a public use there. But if we're trying to protect this and replacing such high value on it, the park should be required to follow the same standards that any developer would follow there. It just, I can't, I can't draw the distinction if we're talking about anything other than putting like a nature trail through an area. I don't think that, I think we're, we're either protecting the, the resource or we're not.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
I just wanted to point out that, so Twalton Hills Park and Rec is the largest parks provider in the state of Oregon. We have what's called a GRASP analysis, where we look at the entire district. So we serve 270,000 people, it's Beaverton and the, sorry, and the surrounding areas, so Aloha, Cedar Mill, Cedar Hills. And we look at what areas are served at a rate that meets our values around a, we have a mile radius around how accessible a park is. And so I just, this seems like a great learning opportunity to explain that we might look at a particular area of town and say, gosh, like, there are no soccer fields there. I'm not going to pull out maps, that isn't helpful, but I just wanted to provide that additional context that the largest parks provider in the area is looking at what people, what the community has access to and committed to access. So that means that all your kids, all adults have access to a park within walking distance, have soccer fields in the area. I don't want to talk about THPRD anymore, but I have to defend.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can firsthand speak to that. I mean, living most of my time in Oregon's been in the Bonnie slopes, Cedar Mill area, it's grossly underserved by parks. We pay all kinds of fees and taxes and things, but it's grossly underserved, and there is a need to create additional opportunities in those areas. But again, I think that doesn't mean that we clear cut the trees for a park if we're saying we can't do it for another purpose. But again, nature trails and things like that, awesome purpose for that, but, you know, working around the trees and things like that. I'm going to stop beating the dead horse there, but I do understand the point of accessibility there, because I've lived without it most of my time here.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? I did want to bring up a topic that Commissioner, or that Chair Lockwood included in her email, where she mentioned that she would support an engrossment to, for an exception for mineral extraction. And I was wondering if I could ask why, or, you know, the logic behind including mineral extraction as an, as an exempt use?
So that is an exempt use already in here, so I don't think she was suggesting adding that. I think maybe she was saying maybe only that. I'm not certain, I would have to look back, but, so, I can take a guess at this, the Goal V also includes mineral extraction as a Goal V protected use. It seems a little strange that it's not about keeping the minerals in the ground, but they're a Goal V resource for taking them out of the ground, and so they are a protected Goal V use. So they're exempt from this side of things because they are allowed under Goal V to happen, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. Commissioner Kaiser?
I'm going to suggest an engrossment that I think might hit the middle mark on some of this, and that would be an engrossment in which we, what it's actually said here is possible action would be recommending refinement of the exemptions rather than wholesale throwing them out necessarily. So perhaps a, a narrowing of that scope, so that if we had a situation where we have parts of this natural resource that can't just be, or, or, or blocking a public facility that has, it can't be there anymore, just as an example, we're going to, we're going to throw a road in, we got to put this road in, that white oak's got to go, right? If that happens, understood, right? Then we're not screwing up the, we're not, we're, we're using the EC analysis for the greater good in that case. If we do that, if we provide a recommendation that narrows that scope or an engrossment that narrows that scope to only situations where it would impede public progress of a utility, a park or a transportation facility, then at least there's some decision being made somewhere that you're not, you don't get to just go through and do whatever you want. And that's where I, I would like to see at least some restriction on that. I, I feel like, given the fact that we're in a housing crisis, given the fact that we struggle to find places for people to live, I think people need to live, too. But I also don't think I should, we should give up significant natural resource area for every house that wants to be built either, right? So it's not that I want the process to be more expensive, and I, I know how time-consuming it can be, but I at least feel like if we did an engrossment where we recommended some refinement to it, and even if we let staff come back with that refinement at some point.
Just kind of a question for you, what do you think that public, like, kind of the public purpose is that would be in that narrow grounds? It's kind of a, it gave an, like, it has to be there, that is one of those things that might not be clear and objective or easy for us to understand what the commission is thinking on that?
Sure. So in my, in my case, the thought I had in my mind was going off of the right-of-way situation that Commissioner Will brought up with, you know, you're, you're widening a road, you're bringing in some sidewalks, you're going to put a bunch, you're going to punch, put punch a bunch of new street trees in as well at that time, you always do. So in that case, if it dropped into one of these spots, and let's say a white oak was there, or, or a, a tree of significant value was there, a determination as to whether or not we, the, the project at not a significant cost could be rerouted around that piece, you know, maybe five feet or whatever it is, and if it can't be, fine, right? That, that is what it is, it's for the public process, and that's great. At least some sort of process to look at those, these S and R regions and have a little more heightened sense of how a city or a, a park, or not city, how the county or a park handles that, or PGE, for example.
So one of the things with something like that is we're, our requirements must be clear and objective, and it would be very difficult to figure out a way to make that clear and objective. We couldn't say if, if, I'm not, I don't think that we could make that clear and objective, because it's kind of on a case-by-case basis how this situation on that site is different from other ones, and we can't really write our regulations in that way. So it's a thing that we struggle with, but.
You know, I, I'm wondering, though, if the, if the direction of the commission were to say, for asking us to explore that and bring something that that's your direction, your recommendation to the board, and we could bring them some language, that would give us some time to think it through. I mean, for example, I'm hearing like the widening of existing roads or the removal of trees in existing corridors up to X distance maybe gets a blanket exemption, but that may be new corridors or new roads that are not, for example, in the transportation system plan, but maybe ones that have not been, you know, specifically located yet, those maybe would be subject. So we could look at maybe some clear and objective ways to narrow the exemption? Is that what you're kind of getting at?
I think you're on, you're on the, the track what I'm thinking, which is essentially yes or no, you're, you're subject to it, right? Rather than the case-by-case basis that we stated. I, I think I explained that poorly. I think what I'm saying instead is what you're saying exactly, which is, hey, there are situations where, where a, a utility does have to come in, and there's a situation where a utility doesn't necessarily have to come in, right? I mean, I think that's where you're going with that.
It is, yeah. I, I wouldn't want to try and, I would write it now, but I think if, if the direction, if the motion were to direct us to explore that and bring that to the board, then perhaps that would be appropriate, and we could try and do that.
And if I could just clarify, too, for the purpose of your process, the planning commission does not have to recommend a specific number or text or anything like that as a part of your engrossment. And so there could be this guidance to staff. We think it's really important to explore refinement, we want the board to consider that. Now, the board has to have the exact engrossment to order staff, but that gives us a little bit of time before the first board hearing to work on that and accurately convey what I think we've heard through this discussion today.
So along those lines, then I would move an engrossment to further refine that for the board and then let the board make that decision. That would be my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'm in order. Are we engrossing individual portions of this, or are we going to wait until we finish the 902 conversation and then make a motion with recommendations to engross 902 with certain points?
Yeah, we're going to go one topic by one. It's too complicated, and we can never agree on anything. Yes, exactly.
And at the end, we'll try to wrap this all up for you and say, we understand, we've heard authorization to recommend engrossment on these points, is that correct? And we'll all check in again before the final recommendation.
So I heard, I heard a motion, so I'm asking if anyone is willing to second.
Second, I think I understood, an engrossment for a recommendation, yeah.
My, my intent was to recommend them examining before it gets to the board, a, a limiting of the scope, that's all.
And I, I so appreciated this discussion, and I hope that can be shared with the board. And I so appreciate how we're all like, this is hard.
So is it appropriate to ask a question?
If there's discussion on the, on the motion, which has now been seconded, so you can, you can deliberate and discuss the motion.
Okay.
Before you take a vote.
Commissioner Kaiser, in your, in your motion, were you asking for narrowing or identifying more structure on specific exemptions or a blanket for all of the exemptions?
I, I honestly think what I'm, I'm asking is, can staff take a look at some clear and objective standards that might fit this and then recommend those possibly to the board, or, or not even recommend, just bring those to the board and let the board make a decision on it? It wouldn't even be a recommendation, it would just be more that we're recommending that staff take a little deeper look on that and try to present that to the board because we're on the timeline we are. So that was my thought process. It wouldn't be something we're deciding, essentially. Not that it ever is, but.
Commissioner Frey?
I would request that if, if recommendations are being made along those lines, that there be some limitations on parks in terms of maybe calling it like nature parks or things along those lines where it's still providing public access, but it's keeping the resource in a primarily natural state. And I know that being clear and objective with how you word that would be challenging, but to me, it seems like that's an important distinction.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
I just wanted to make sure that Commissioner Lockwood's, or Chair Lockwood's words are part of this conversation. Her very specific statement is that she supports ordinance 902 with an exception. Development and repair of public parks, public facilities and mineral, mineral extraction should not be completely exempt. I wanted to make sure that her words were on the record, and those are the ones that I support. I believe the proposal on the table right now is engrossment with additional research. I think I would prefer to support engrossment with this exception.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we would have to, because Commissioner Kaiser's.
We got to vote on that first.
Right. Because Commissioner Kaiser's motion has been made and seconded, we vote on that first, or you can amend.
I actually, given what you're putting forth, that, that is a much more finite decision that would be made, and I think that motion should be made first. So I would withdraw my motion, and then I would allow you to make that motion, and then, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioner comments on the new developments?
Just to clarify, it is a recommendation to explore.
So just to be clear, I pulled that, that off the table, because I think the motion that Commissioner.
Rosenberg.
Rosenberg, I'm sorry, is considering here is one that is a more finite definite solution, good or bad, whatever you feel about it, than what I'm suggesting, and probably should be discussed before we talk about this, whether or not we're going to send it back to staff. I, I don't want to preempt that thought with my motion, so that's why I was going to withdraw my motion.
And that is an exception, an exception.
Yes.
And the person who seconded the motion agrees to that withdrawal?
Commissioner Monte Blanco, do you agree to the withdrawal?
Yes.
Then it's withdrawn.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Rosenberg?
I make a motion, following the words of Chair Lockwood, to support ordinance 902 with the exception that development and repair of public parks, public facilities and mineral extraction should not be completely exempt.
I would second it.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Can I ask a question first?
Unless there's discussion or deliberation.
Discussion.
So the way that that motion was made, it's,
it takes the whole ordinance into consideration, and I think we're just doing bit by bit. So the, the proper form would be as we have on page four. So I move to recommend that the Board of Commissioners engross ordinance 902 by, and then it would be.
Development and repair.
Development and, by amending the ordinance so that development and repair of public parks, public facilities and mineral extraction are not completely exempt from the standards.
Thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Rosenberg and Commissioner Kaiser, would you like to withdraw the motion that is on the table?
Could we modify?
I, I think you just want to modify it. I, I think all Commissioner Rosenberg needs to say is, is that I support this engrossment rather than saying, I think we should keep 902 as it is and just do that one thing.
Right. Thank you. I was excitedly reading the words that were written by our chair. I would support the modification as has been presented by. I would support the modification, as has been presented by Teresa.
And I would second, I would support it as well.
And you, you made the second to that motion, then?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Discussion. Commissioner Monte Blanco.
I'd like to understand, then staff would go to the Board of Directors and say, here's some ideas based on, on, here's some ideas that would, that would not completely, not completely exempt. So, you're, so we're not deciding exactly what it's going to look like. Y'all are going to go to the board and be like, this was a big topic. Blood pressure went up. Here are some ideas.
Yes.
Okay. That, I can support discussion. Great, thank you.
Any more commissioner comments? Okay. Commissioner Will.
Thank you. I, I think, I don't want to summarize for other people, but what I, I heard is, for the staff, if they want to express to the board what, what we really meant by not completely exempt, I think the, there seemed to be no argument with the issue of like a utility or transportation in a confined space, so like an existing right-of-way. But if the project includes like buying new land to punch a road through land that is not a current right-of-way, then maybe that's when they should be not exempt. Because if you're buying new land and you need space to mitigate your tree impacts, buy more land for those tree impacts. Or if you have an existing park and you're, you're improving it, maybe that's not an issue. But when you're buying new land for a new park and you need room to mitigate your trees, well, buy more land for more mitigation area. So, to me, it sounded a lot like, like the exemption was reasonable when you have existing property, when you can, confined amount of space to do your work. But when you're doing something new, you know, you should, you should, you should have some review process and should not be exempt from a new, like purchasing new right-of-way, like through eminent domain or, or willing sellers. That road design should include, you know, impacts to trees and mitigation of those, not be exempt. So, that's what I understood and wanted to add.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Commissioner Will, we really appreciate your words. What a beautiful way to state it. Thank you.
So, as the motion stands, my understanding is it does not include additional explanation regarding public utilities and transportation facilities?
I, I don't think that's true. I actually think what it's saying is, and staff, please confirm if I'm right or not, I think what we're trying to say here is exactly what Commissioner Will said, which is, there are certain scenarios, like existing right-of-way, where that is just probably not realistic. And so, that's something that, that we all, not all, but some of us think that's really important. On the flip side, why wouldn't a utility at least be part of the process of looking at this in a new situation where they do have the opportunity to make some decisions about location or, or land purchase or whatever it is? I think that, I, I think that said it very well for what my concern was. I think that the Commissioner Will hit that really well. I think, and I don't want to speak for Commissioner Rosenberg, but I think that's what she wanted to.
And I, I think, my, I, I understand your intention, but I think the words of the ordinance don't include that, so I wanted to make sure that those words are included, if that is your intent.
And it did say public facilities, and I think the assumption is that that included utilities and transportation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, additional deliberation? Commissioner Frey.
I'm mostly tracking with where everybody's coming on this. I guess one of my clarification, or one of my questions would be is, if we're looking at like a transportation plan or something like that, where we have these kind of long-range planning things, where they're kind of saying, this is how we think everything's going to connect, and we're going to, we're going to punch roads through in the future. That's not necessarily something that's existing right-of-way, but it's maybe practically something that's fairly necessary. I don't, I'm not a long-range planner, but I can't, you know, I imagine some of the, the road connectivity gets to be pretty challenging and important. And we talk about what it's going to do for, how far people have to drive around different places to get from point A to point B. I would want to make sure we have path for that to happen still, and we don't, we don't make it, so all of a sudden, you can't get down, or you have to drive 10 miles around to get somewhere. I don't think that would be highly beneficial. So, I don't know if anybody has any comments or clarification they can provide on that.
Commissioner Kaiser, and then I have a, actually, can I...
No, go ahead.
Okay. I'm wondering if at this point, in consideration of time, if individual commissioners have thoughts about some of the structures and suggestions that will be presented to the county commission, or they would like presented to the county commission, if it might be a good idea for those to be emailed to county staff, so that we can move, move along in our agenda. Commissioner Kaiser, did you have?
I just, all I was going to add to what Commissioner Frey, or Frey said was, I, I think it's application-dependent anyway, right? It wouldn't be, in terms of a long-term planning situation, when you're talking about a comprehensive plan amendment, et cetera, like 901, it wouldn't be, this would be application-based, right?
Right. The Development Code applies to development applications, but we would, in our TSP, we would be looking at the alignments and how they relate to natural resources as part of the planning.
They wouldn't have purchased that land. So, if, if commissioners have suggestions and want to get in touch with you about specifics, what timeline would be helpful for you to receive communication by?
We would need it within a week, I think.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, if no one objects, I would like to ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Frey?
I want to make sure, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm clear, as I'm first to go, on maybe more precisely what the wording was that we're, we're voting on with this roll call.
Commissioner Rosenberg, do you want to read that, that language back again?
That we... recommending engrossment of ordinance 902, the portion related to exempting public parks, utilities, and transportation. Am I getting this accurately? Is there an exact language I need to use? Recommend engrossment of ordinance 902. But not fully, just this portion of it.
Yep.
Okay. With the, with recommend refinement, the exception that development and repair of public parks, public facilities, utilities, and mineral extraction should not be completely exempt. Is that language clear for the folks who are keeping track at home? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Will. You're on mute.
I did not hear the clarification that I gave, and so, may I, may I ask to complicate the process by making a friendly amendment to the motion? I, I would like, I move that we amend the motion to add the statement, like, to clarify, not completely exempt, to be, allow exemptions for existing facilities, but look for a, a regulation or control of new proposed facilities. I'd like to move to make a friend, add friendly amendment.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Commissioner Will, if I'm hearing you accurately, your recommendation that is I modify my move to support this portion of ordinance 902 being engrossed with the exception that the exemption is only for existing development and repair of public parks, public facilities, utilities, and mineral extraction. Those, for new projects, those would not be excluded. Is that your recommendation to modify?
Yeah, new properties. So, you know, if, if, new properties. So, if, if you have the right-of-way or the park already, you know, you're, you're just, it's already committed to that use, but it's, it's when you want to purchase new properties, what we talked about, buy a new land to build a new park, or buy new land to punch a road through new areas where a road doesn't exist. It's a new, new right-of-way, new easements, new land for parks. That, when you're getting new stuff, we've talked about, you, you should be required, just like a homeowner wants to build a new house, or a developer wants to subdivide a property, you should be required, and should be not exempt, as the, as our planning commissioner's language says, should not be exempt, right? So, those should not be exempt. But if you have an existing street, and you're, you're widening it, and there's a tree that needs to be cut, then that, that should be exempt. If you have an existing park, and you're revising a path and, and repaving a path, and that you have to take out a tree to get the path widened to new, new standards, that, that's, that's existing. So, that's what I was clarifying, and so that's why I want to add that friendly amendment to clarify.
So, for clarification, sorry, I'm not completely following. The existing uses would be... So, allow exemptions for existing facilities, but do not apply the exemptions for future change in use.
Yeah, I, I think he said future properties, but I'm wondering if the direction we're giving staff, since staff is the one who's going to have to create this, I think it's clear to staff what we're talking about.
Yeah.
While our motions are a mess, I'm pretty sure that's not what we're, you get what everybody, or what, what Commissioner Will's saying, what Commissioner Rosenberg is saying, what I'm saying. I, I think we're there. I, that's my opinion.
As long as the commission is clear on what you are voting on, then yes.
Yes.
I just add, the reason why I thought it was important to ask for my friendly, friendly amendment to the motion to be accepted by, by the commission is, is that the way the, the motion was read, from the Chair Lockwood's language, it says, you know, should not be exempt, you know, fully exempt. It's like, okay, well, if they're not fully exempt, when are they exempt? And I'm saying that the exemption should apply, you know, to existing rights-of-way, existing easements, existing property owned by one of these utilities or park facilities. But it's when they're trying to acquire new land for new roads, new parks, new transmission lines, new pipelines, that the design of that new facility going through new lands should not be exempt.
I, I think that the word new may be a challenge for staff. We don't want to tie these regulations to change in ownership specifically. I, I think that could be complicated. I do think that we've heard a lot through this discussion that gives us the opportunity to develop some proposed regulations to take to the board. So, again, I would encourage the PC to not try to be overly prescriptive to us at this time, so that we can move through the motion while giving the guidance to staff to develop something to take to the board.
In that case, I'll withdraw my friendly motion for amendment, and just consider that language as part of the discussion, please, staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Will. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, so let's move to a vote.
Commissioner Frey.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Whips.
Yes.
Commissioner Will.
I am staying.
Vice Chair Maury Bidu.
Yes.
We have a total of six votes in favor, and the motion passes.
So, at this time, it is 3 o'clock, and we typically take a five-minute break at an hour and a half, so I move to take that five-minute break at this time. Be back at 3:09. Be back at 3:09. I think we can, is everyone here? Let's wait for those online. Thanks, everyone, for coming back online. I'm going to turn it over to staff for continuation of the staff report on ordinance 902.
Thanks, Chair Maury Badoo. The second related exemption is for lots with upland wildlife habitat where the habitat patch is small, and that would be maybe less than 500 square feet, or the lot itself is small, and that standard is under a half an acre for that exemption. So this is proposed as a carryover from the Habitat Inventory Report where it allows development to proceed on these very small patches. And for the lots, for the lot size, it is based on a similar exclusion from the inventory found in the methodology that we used right from the beginning. We wanted to remove smaller lots because in many cases, the smaller lot signified that they'd been through a land development or a land division process and would have likely been required to have complied with the Significant Natural Resources Regulations for the site. But some PC members were concerned about the loss of housing capacity on sites with upland habitat and had questions about the implications on mapped acreage. So on that half-acre minimum, or that the half-an-acre minimum exemption was not large enough lots to exempt. So when this was discussed by the Planning Commission, staff didn't have good acreage numbers at hand, so here's some more information on that topic. This table shows the breakdown of the 696 acres of upland wildlife habitat in pre-2006 urban growth boundary areas for lands in the urban unincorporated area that totaled there at the bottom. Within the upland habitat in the urban area, approximately 386 acres are on residential land. Of that 386 acres, 269 acres are privately held on individual lots over a half-an-acre in size, meaning potentially available for more housing development. The other 117 acres of mapped habitat are for public use or open spaces like parks, schools, cemeteries, or other homeowners' association tracks. So note that the upland wildlife habitat land within the residential district represents approximately 2% of the county's total area within the county's urban residential land use districts, or about 17,000 acres in urban unincorporated area. So this table breaks down the 269 acres further of the upland wildlife habitat on residential lots based on the size of the lot the habitat is on. It also gives you a sense of the number of lots, depending on the lot size, and the average percentage of lot coverage based on the various sizes of the residential lots. For example, there are 68 lots that are over three acres in size with approximately 87 acres of mapped wildlife habitat on it. The upland wildlife habitat covers, on average, approximately 12% of the total lot area. So taking all of the lots into considerations that are half an acre or more, the average percentage of lot area coverage of significant upland wildlife habitat is about 33%. So leaving, it leaves over two-thirds of the lot area not subject to the Significant Natural Resource Upland Wildlife Habitat standards, to just kind of give you some perspective. I'll kind of pause here, maybe so that you can kind of digest that table a little bit. So if the Planning Commission is concerned with the potential impacts on housing development from the land mapped as upland, it could recommend an increase in the lot size exempted from the upland wildlife habitat development standards. So our response is that such a change would reduce protections from its current levels, and the mapped wildlife habitat mitigation standards have been in place since the 1980s, and it balances the habitat protection while still promoting housing development. It would likely require a reevaluation of the ESEE analysis of lightly limit decision, the policies to protect habitat in ordinance 901, as well as consideration of the protection levels for the limited habitat remaining to be regulated. The regulations that have been proposed include flexibility in dimensional standards, density transfer opportunities, and discretionary options for tree retention and removal, and they provide alternatives for developing housing on smaller lots, so expanded exemption is not needed, and we do not support this potential change. So I'll pause here again for your questions, discussion, and deliberations.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaiser.
So I'll fess up to being the one who brought this question forward, and part of the thing that I was hoping staff would provide was this table. I think this table's excellent. Thank you for that. That's very helpful. I brought this up more from the perspective of discussion about what that standard is. We talked a little bit in the public hearing and when staff reported before how they arrived at that .5-acre standard, and part of what I wanted to talk a little bit about from a development standpoint that's difficult is when you talk about, let's say you have one acre of land and you're going to develop it, forget for a minute whether it's on a significant natural resource or not, or if it's in that area. There's a certain percentage of it you're losing to roads, and a certain percentage you're going to lose to stormwater, right? So there's already a reduced amount of housing that can be created on there. Now, a lot of times you can shrink, smaller lot sizes, you can still get more houses, so that's not bad. It's just a fact, right? So the question is, is on a .5-acre lot, it makes sense to not do this, obviously, because you pretty much probably wipe out the rest of it. But on, is that true for, or is, I should say, should that go out to one acre? I mean, obviously, three acres would mean putting all of it in, so that pretty much doesn't make a lot of sense. But is there at least discussion about that to talk about it, whether or not that is the right spot for an exemption, if it should be .5 or one or whatever? So that's really my intent of the question.
Commissioner Frey.
I also appreciate the graphic here and appreciate Commissioner Kaiser's comments there. Question and clarification I have for staff on this is, so this is upland habitat mapping, and I'm assuming, but please correct me if this is wrong, I'm assuming that many of these properties either could be or are impacted by riparian overlays, and that those numbers in that acreage is not included in the upland habitat acreage. Is that correct?
Right. We took off any riparian habitat to evaluate. So some of the properties would have both types of habitat and some just have the upland wildlife habitat, and that, that's not part of the lot coverage. It's just lot covered with upland wildlife habitat.
And so my reason for asking or presenting that question is that a lot of these properties are potentially, or any of these properties are potentially also further burdened by the existing riparian overlays. So I just want to make sure when we look at those numbers that we're considering the fact that maybe it looks like only a third on average is being made undevelopable by the new SNR upland habitat overlay, but it doesn't mean that a significant portion of that's not already undevelopable because of the riparian overlays that exist. So you could potentially end up with a much smaller remaining area.
Well, a point of clarification, our regulations do not make a property undevelopable on its own for having upland wildlife habitat or redevelopable.
Fair clarification.
And so...
Add additional burdens and restrictions to development.
We have, right, we have the three alternative tree protection and removal standards.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
First question is, this is the standard that's been in place since 1980. It's just that we're expanding the lots that would be impacted because we're expanding the coverage. Is that accurate?
A couple of things there. So we did have, we had mapped wildlife habitat that was mapped in the 1980s as our own unique habitat category. We had regulations in Section 422 that did regulate, that required mitigation for seriously interfering with the significant wildlife habitat, for example. The mitigation was not defined at what it was or what constituted serious, seriously interferes. So we had a subjective standard, but we had some, we had some, a standard in place for wildlife habitat. When we consolidated the county inventory with the metro inventory, there are additional areas that, that, that were, that ended up being added to the county's wildlife habitat area because it fit the methodology criteria that we established in the habitat report. So it all kind, it became habitat that met that certain criteria.
But it was always the .5-acre cutoff? We're not creating that as new language?
Well, we were not, that's, that's in the inventory where we created that exception. There weren't any exceptions in the code before that. So we're adding kind of that threshold to, in the inventory, and through the inventory process, we said, what would be a good threshold where, where it would be challenging to create regulations for properties that small and that, in most cases, rather than to research every property to see if it's gone through a significant natural, you know, gone through a development review process, a half-acre was a, was a wide berth kind of cutoff to kind of think about that.
Thank you. The question that came up a little bit earlier relating to if one of these lots is also riparian habitat, it's subjected still to the riparian habitat requirements, it's just exempted from the upland wildlife habitat? Or is it exempted entirely from any, any restriction?
So the riparian wildlife habitat goes through the process of identifying where the vegetated corridor and the requirements of clean water services, and they identify that vegetated corridor along the stream bank, the area that's closest to the water. If there are areas that are within the vegetated corridor only, then there aren't any tree regulations for that vegetated corridor from the county's perspective. If the area is outside the vegetated corridor, but they're still within a significant habitat boundary, the boundary that we've established through the mapping, then that area is subject to the tree retention and removal requirements for that significant habitat area. And that's not part of this calculation. This is only if it's mapped upland wildlife habitat.
Commissioner Monte Blanco.
I think, just a, thank you, I think just a clarity question. So, okay, .5, what if it's, what if there are several lots that are both, that are all .5 next to each other with a lot of upland wildlife habitat that is way bigger than .5 combined?
Well, if it was taken alone, the .5 acres would have been removed from the inventory, so it wouldn't, wouldn't...
Doesn't matter that they're...
It wouldn't, no. It wouldn't, it wouldn't matter.
I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Just to clarify my understanding of what Commissioner Rosenberg was asking, am I right in saying that generally speaking, if I was looking at a map, my vegetative corridor, my area, the riparian area, is going to be nearest the bank, it's going to be 25 feet out, then most, that can be upland, but no, no significant natural, or no riparian area is outside of that area. So essentially, you're going from the bank as riparian, and then you would have upland habitat after that. So, and if I also correct, the Significant Natural Resource provisions are pretty strong about what you can and can't do in those areas. They're not options like we have here. They're pretty much stay out of them. So it would be fair to say, I think, and I'm asking, if the first 25 feet from a stream are in that riparian area, and then the next 50 feet were in the, were in the upland wild, or habitat, you've got an area of 75 feet that is impacted by an environmental regulation, just two separate ones, correct? Would that be fair to say?
That sounds right.
Okay. I just wanted to get that straight in my head.
Yeah, impacted, but impacted in different ways.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
What one would be a more significant one?
The riparian would be, yeah, more restrictive, and the upland is less restrictive. The idea is that development can happen there, removal of trees can happen there, and if more than half of the tree points are removed, then there's some mitigation that's required. So it's less restrictive than the riparian.
Is it fair to say this, and perhaps this will confuse everyone, and I don't want to do it, but I'm going to say it anyway, you can't be a, you can't be a riparian, you can be a riparian area and an upland wildlife habitat area, but you can't be an upland wildlife habitat area, or I should say, you can't be a riparian area outside of a certain number of square feet from a, or not square feet, linear feet from a, from a stream, correct? Isn't that usually the, when we're talking about those restrictions, they're stream-related, right?
We rely on what clean water services...
Yes.
But generally, it's, it's from, measured from the center of stream, but it also involves slope and involves the type of soils.
Sure.
And, what did you say? And the, and the different wetlands, too.
Right, other water features, not just streams.
Fair enough. That's, thank you for the clarification.
But it's the wet area.
Yeah, the wet area.
Upland is a little less wet, less likely to be inundated by the water.
Got it. Thank you.
Other commissioner comments or discussion? At this time, I'd like to invite a motion concerning this order.
So I think what staff is saying here is, hey, we recommend you don't touch it. And so any motion you make would be a motion to touch it, frankly, and move it to a different goalpost. The only thought I have on that, from my perspective, is, and this table is really helpful, is the level of impact on .5, yeah, I think you guys are 100% accurate. That's, it's going to be a lot of impact, and that's probably a decent situation for it to be exempt. The question is, .5 acre to one acre is also a significant number of lots, and they're small lots, and that impact, when you add that to adding roads and your water quality facilities and everything else, might make, might make some of those lots pretty tough to use. I will also say, it's not like this restriction says you can't develop in those areas. There's three or four different options for doing it. There's the tree point. There's the tree points. This is not like a riparian area where you're saying, hey, you can't touch anything. So for me, I, I, I would be in, in favor of going out to one acre, but I would love to hear more about what, if anybody else has, is like, no, shut up, leave it alone, whatever, that's fine. I, I just would like to hear what people's thoughts were on that before I made a motion or, or didn't.
Commissioner Fry.
Thank you. Uh, my, my focus on this was that it's the pre-2006 urban growth boundary and it's not directly subject to Title 13. Um, that we've kind of decided we're going to remap everything altogether and we're going to apply standards to the pre-2006 area that weren't necessarily mandated to be adjusted and applied to. These areas that have largely been built out, they've, um, they have utilities, they have roads, um, they have all the services available for the most part to efficiently serve the properties. And that makes them easier, more cost effective to, to develop in some ways, but also less of an impact to develop than other areas might be or like expanding the U G B, um, and kind of the sprawl mentality. So these areas have already kind of been prioritized by being in the U G B for development, by being in the U G B for this long, they've largely been developed around. Um, so you know, we talk about the environmental impact of, of cutting down the trees, the environmental impact of paving, um, you know, putting down a bunch of new concrete, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, um, and, uh, putting in a bunch of new utilities. There's an impact to be measured and considered there. So I think if we're, we're basically, we're really limiting the development potential of these infill areas with these new restrictions that are being applied. And I think that I want to, I really want to distinguish that fact that this is an area that was prioritized for development, is most efficient to serve for development, is closest to services. So people don't have to drive as far to get to a school. We don't have to build a new school to service it. We don't have to bus people forever, you know? It's really ripe for residential use, um, in many cases. So that's why I think that it merits a little bit more flexibility than some of the urban growth boundaries that were added later, um, and are, you know, less dense already. My preference on this would be to move to a two acre limitation. I can see the, I can see the concern as you look at the numbers on there, but having discussed the fact that riparian overlays exist on many of these parcels and are already protected and limiting the amount of space that can be used. Commissioner Kaiser commented on, on, you know, stormwater facilities and things like that to take up developable space, roads, sidewalk right away, um, all these things that every one of these little parcels gets whittled down more and more and more to the point where, when you start to look at what it costs to develop one of these, if you're doing a small partition, it almost never pencils to, to go in and do a development project on it because it's just costs too much and you get too little out of it. So what we're basically saying to a lot of these things, if we don't adjust the restrictions is that they're going to stay in their current state for better, for worse, however you feel about that. And they're not going to get additional housing, which is needed and it was really the intended use of a lot of these parcels to begin with. So my, my preference would be to move to a two acre exemption instead of the .5.
Other comments? Commissioner Monte Blanco?
I guess as, as I sit here and process this, I really lean towards the under .5 based on what I'm hearing from staff, based on this really helpful chart, based on the whole title, which is protecting significant natural resources. Um, so, yeah, I, so I, I am so appreciative of the expertise that's on this table and helping shape my decision making.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Just, I'm going to ask staff another question. I, I think I remember this from years past. When we talk about the urban growth boundary expansions and, and the idea behind an urban growth boundary expansion is, okay, we're saying, we're not going to develop outside this circle, whatever it is. And, uh, when we bring things into urban growth boundaries, we want to develop them to their fullest extent possible. Obviously that doesn't mean you just pave right over everything, but you want to develop them to the fullest extent possible. I thought, and I, maybe I'm wrong, but I, it's either state, I thought it was sort of state policy that the idea is anything inside the U G B, you want to encourage for development, doesn't mean it has to, but you want to encourage it in the respect that you don't, you want to give development a priority on it unless it is one of these scenarios where you've got riparian areas, et cetera, environmental constraints. Is that accurate under state law? Is that kind of the push when you talk about an urban growth bound, or when you have an urban growth boundary? Is that, or am I just making that up? It's possible.
Well.
Go ahead, Ken.
I was going to, I think that's a, that's a very, um, you know, apt, uh, description of the statewide planning goals. So we have statewide planning goals. They do speak to, uh, development and urbanization of housing, of employment and, and jobs, um, and of natural resources. And so they do ask you for that balancing and, um, you know, describe those, those, those attributes. So, and I, and again, I think you're right, urban land, um, is where urban development is expected to occur, not outside of, outside of the urban growth boundary. That, you know, urban development belongs within the urban growth boundary. So those things are true. I do think, again, that, that the statewide planning goals also talk about natural resources and Goal 5 in particular, right? So that they're asking you to do that balancing.
Well, and also when you take into account Title 13, which is when they expand the urban growth boundary in post-2005 areas, they incorporate require, more strict requirements for upland wildlife habitat. So at the time Title 13 was adopted, they considered, hey, new urban growth boundary expansion areas should consider upland wildlife habitat and have those regulations. But those areas that were already in the urban growth boundary at the time in 2005, we're not going to put that burden on those from, from that regional regulatory perspective, knowing that a lot of jurisdictions have different requirements for trees and other environmental protections in place. Like the county had the wildlife habitat area already in place or some jurisdictions had tree codes. But then new urban growth boundary expansions, as Commissioner Fry said, have, have more restrictions on the upland habitat area. So it's not a blanket areas inside the urban growth boundary or outside the urban growth boundary. And also the needed housing regulations also include exceptions for environmental regulations.
But talking about pre-2006, 2005 spaces, they've had one regulation in place, which is the original county mapping. And now that's changing, which to a, in theory, a clear and objective standard. Um, so it is changing that restriction on a, a group of people that were not subject to that previously. That's fair to say, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, thank you. I just want to make sure I've got that clear. Uh, from my perspective, I, I support increasing it, uh, size wise. I'm, I'm open to listening to everyone. If, if nobody else has any suggestions, that's fine too. I just, I think .5 is really small and I think it, I, I don't think it does much to help with infill construction. And why is infill construction important? But guys, I, I do a lot of work for big builders, the Lenars, the, the Holtz of the world and those guys, right? They all, most of them are building in the, the urban growth boundary areas, right? They're building big subdivisions. There's a whole core of small development companies that work off of infill property. And what they're doing, or what I appreciate about what they're doing is they're, they're using creative methods to try to come up with additional housing in areas that, that are underdeveloped. It shouldn't be at the cost of the environment, but they're the ones who get squeezed the most in this, not just in this process, in every process. Um, they can't afford to buy the urban growth boundary land. They just don't have that ability. And so the situation with having some more exemption here, some additional acreage, uh, makes sense to me, but I don't, I also am conflicted because of, I don't want to be compromising environmental, or the environmental protection we need to make. So again, I'm very conflicted on this one. I, I'm just not sure where I land on it at this point.
Commissioner Witz?
Thank you, uh, very much so for the chart. It's, uh, good to have numbers in consideration into the decision here and, uh, being a numbers kind of percentage, I can see what it affects. I'm, I'm back and forth on the cost. I think you really have to understand building, um, to the, to the very end of what exactly can be covered on a lot of land. And my concern is that .5 does get whittled down and, uh, you know, Joe made a great, um, comment and it's something where the, the mid-range, the small, the creative, that's, that's get, that's the toughest to build. So if we want to maximize the land and potentially slow growth, which is the urban growth boundary, well, I'm in favor of making sure we have successful business plans and successful projects. And, you know, it doesn't seem like much from a half acre to an acre, but to a builder to provide X amount more homes, X amount more townhomes, uh, mid-housing, uh, cluster cottages, whatever is needed at that point in time. I, I think it's best that we, we give them a little bit more um, to the space that was allocated for the purpose of housing, uh, knowing that we have the protection additional layers, uh, down the road if they come across certain areas. So, um, I'm not saying needs to be two acres, but I'm definitely in favor for recommending and, uh, hearing everyone else out on this, um, planning side here, what their feelings are towards an acre or more. Because I, I do see the value in dissipating the costs and spurring activity for, um, the housing crisis and, and to solve the value, uh, issue in the affordability act. You, you've just got to promote building to some degree. If this is a solution and it's already been allocated, we can protect environment. Well, I'm in favor of looking at these percentages and numbers to moving it, you know, more towards a one acre and maybe higher if others can make a case. So that's my, um, two cents that I wanted to input and, uh, I'll let you all, uh, take it from there.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
What is the number of lots? Like if this had one more row for .5 and under?
That would be really, uh, we don't have that.
So, yeah, maybe that's.
We have the total area of residential, uh, resident, residential land use districts are, um, 17,000 acres, um, in total, but.
And we know .5.
No. Um, how many units are under five acres that? I have, I, they, it was just a G I S, our consultant came before and then looked at the habitat patches within those areas. So, um, what the, I don't think it's in the habitat report either, no. We'd have to get that, we'd have to, we'd have to let you.
Sorry, go ahead. I was going to say, it does get complicated because of course, you know, we end up with some very small townhouse lots and so, so the number of lots gets, I mean, we could go back and look at the lots that were excluded with the, you know, that came out of the inventory with the, you know, because they were below a half acre and they met that criteria to be removed. And really, I mean, in theory, because this, this exemption is meant to dovetail with the way the inventory was conducted and the approval crit, or the methodology in the inventory, there really shouldn't be any lots that meet this still in the inventory, right? Because they should, we, we put this in the regulations on the off chance that the inventory methodology, when we ran the G I S, it, it, we missed something, right? And so we said, okay, well, just in case we missed something and to kind of be a belt and suspenders level of protection, we took them out of the inventory, they met that criteria. We said, we'll, we'll put that also in the exemptions because they, we, they were taken, they should have been taken out of the inventory. If we missed them, then we should make an exemption. So that's the logic. So if we, if we change the exemption significantly, um, he, here, then in theory, we ought to go back to the inventory and rewrite, which is why it suddenly becomes this cascading issue of, oh, wait a minute. Okay, wait a minute, those aren't significant. Now we've said those aren't significant and now we need to back them out of the inventory and then we have to redo the E S E calculations. So that's the, keep in mind that like in theory, if we did our job, you know, on the inventory and ran those G I S models and everything got captured correctly, as it should have, this should be an empty set. These exemptions should not be catching anybody because we should have taken them out. Does that make sense? So, um, so I guess we can go back and look at what got taken out, but there, if we were to run it right now on the inventory, the answer should be zero. Perfect world. I don't, does that help at all? Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
This is just because I don't remember details from the past. So maybe you're, you're just going to fill us back in. These are the number of undeveloped lots? Or is it the potential that these are, 99% of these are already developed and we're not even talking about limiting development in the future because these already have a home on them?
They, they, um, they, for the most part, have a home on them. I'm, I, we didn't, there's not that many, yeah, there's not that many vacant homes. Um, most of them have a home on them or have an area, uh, for, uh, excluded. I can't, but there probably is a handful.
They may be underdeveloped, so you may have.
Sure, they're a half an acre with one house on them.
Or an acre or two acres with one house on it. So that might be underdeveloped, there's room for redevelopment, um, but yeah.
Right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a, a zone that had a minimum lot size of a half an acre. The largest is R5. That would be five units per acre.
Commissioner Will?
Thank you. Um, my comment is similar on this one, uh, to my first comment on the last one. Uh, I think, uh, our commissioners, we just had so many questions in the last couple of hearings that we really appreciate, uh, staff and the staff's consultants' availability to answer these questions. But I'm coming to, as I'm hearing the answers to the questions, I'm coming to, uh, this understanding that, um, you know, we're talking about significant natural resources and, and when you get a property that's so small, um, you know, uh, like it's less than an acre, it gets hard to consider that to be a, a significant chunk, you know, even when it's right next to some, some larger piece. It's just, it's just such a small piece that it's not a significant portion of it. My fear is, is that if we tried to suggest to change the exception, uh, to also accept lots, uh, for example, between a half an acre and an acre, these, these 379 lots, um, I, I feel that, you know, if you, it just doesn't pass the, the average Joe test. If you said, wow, here's an acre of forest, uh, you know, or even here's a, a three quarters of an acre of forest. Oh, but that, that's not protected, you know? I, I think, um, I, I think the properties are getting too big to, to, to be included as an exemption. I, I think the intent is, um, the smaller ones, they're, they're not that significant. But, um, so I, I'm leaning towards, uh, you know, um, you know, feel free to ask more questions, but I'm just not seeing a, an engrossment here, uh, or support from me to, to increase that, that number, uh, to, to provide an exemption for lots that are larger than, um, .5. And I, and I think the reason why I'm not seeing that is also what staff said, I think maybe actually during the last discussion, that to clarify, uh, you know, these, these, these restrictions with this ordinance doesn't prohibit development. So if you have a property that's three fourths acre, you can still develop it. It's just going to, you got to prove that you're not destroying, you know, significant habitat. Um, uh, and, and so I think that's, that's, that's reasonable, um, due to the fact that the average Joe would look at an acre parcel full of trees as a pretty nice piece of habitat. So we should protect them.
Thanks, Commissioner Will. Um, I think Commissioner Monte Blanco, you had something to say and then Commissioner Fry and then I have, um, something to add and then we should try to, to wrap this up.
Yeah, thank you. Just kind of, um, piggybacking on Commissioner Will, what I've heard is that essentially there are no .5, you know? Unlikely, unlikely.
There would have been prior, they've already been excluded by virtue of the inventory mapping methodology.
And so in, based on all this information, nothing is being, in a way, nothing is being exempted.
That's, the exemption should not, there should be nothing in that exemption that would not have already been picked up by the inventory methodology.
Okay.
That is.
We've essentially already applied the exemption through the inventory process.
Yeah, yeah.
Covering that base.
So there were a lot of, a lot of sites that were under half an acre. Um, and just as an example of some additional exclusions, we initially um notified four thousand property owners. The, when we did revisions to the inventory, that went down to thirty-five, thirty-two hundred, I think. So uh, yeah, so during that process, eight hundred properties were removed. Um, some of, a number of those were because of lot size um and having small slivers on their lots. So, so they've already been removed. Um, we've applied the exemption and this is just to, i- in case we missed any, um, this is to allow them to be subject to the same.
I think I mostly just wanted to say that I agree with Commissioner Will.
Thank you. Commissioner Frye.
Think the average Joe comment is actually helpful to me because um we get a lot of, you know, this is, this is me talking from somebody who works in development. We get a lot of average Joe homeowners who call us and think they have um the gold mine of a property that can be developed. But the reality is, on these small parcels with an existing house, because most of these have existing structures, um if it's a small parcel, the the value of the home standalone as is usually exceeds the developable value of the land. So I think what what the average Joe doesn't realize is if you maintain these standards, you're almost just saying nothing can be developed because you're gonna say that none of these smaller parcels can be developed because they're already so economically fraught. Um, and a lot of them, again, a lot of the riparian habitat is next to this upland habitat. So a lot of these are gonna be burdened by multiple layers of protections. You just whittle and whittle and whittle away at what somebody thought they had for the value of the property. Um, to the point where a one acre piece with some kind of structure on it that you either have to demolish, which, you know, carries its own concerns, or move, which is very expensive. Um, and then potentially as riparian or it has upland and you're gonna limit what you can develop and, you know, we have the the pathways for development with the upland. But by the time you kind of chip all that stuff away, you're you're really, when you get into it, and this is what the development community is trying to say, you're making it so we're wiping out a lot of the the stuff that can practically practically be developed. Um, and that's, I think, what's getting missed in this whole conversation. And it's really important because we need housing and it doesn't seem like there are really places that people really ever want housing to go. Um, I I agree that it's not ideal to cut down trees. I agree it's not ideal to get rid of farmland. Um, but I think we need housing and I think that the reality is for most of us, I don't know where y'all live, but most of us probably live somewhere that we got the benefit of having some upland habitat or other habitat cut down so we could have a house. And we have other people that actually still need houses and it's kind of like, well, I've got mine, so I guess it's okay if we can't build more. That sometimes comes into some of this stuff. Um, practically, we really are limiting development and uh creating either the need for further sprawl or just worsening our housing crisis if we don't make some modifications here.
Thank you. Um, I think I just want to add a couple of things here. Um, first of all, um, one thing we haven't talked about is the feasibility of developing, especially on these small um, small sites. Um, where a lot of the upland habitat is in a floodplain and really hard to get lending on that. It's really hard to um meet all of the EPA requirements, you know, the federal requirements as well and um it it's some federal agencies won't even uh support development in flood zones. So those are off the table completely as well. Um, but I think one thing that, you know, we've talked a lot about housing that I wanted to talk a little bit about and I do not claim to be even close to an expert on um is what we are here to focus on is wildlife habitat. And we haven't really talked about wildlife and um I do know, I don't have any statistics, but even small corridors um are really, really important for maintaining wildlife habitat. And part of the enjoyment and value of living where we do is having that wildlife in our backyards in our neighborhoods. We do have the opportunity to, with, you know, zoning changes that we have, some of us have been um participating in the past, uh, you know, have more density. And, you know, in addition to that, um, as you can see on this, on this graphic right here, um, there are three hundred and seventy-nine lots and seventy-six acres. These lots are not one hundred percent upland habitat. It's just a little piece of a lot of them. Um, and layering potential flood insurance on that and things like that that actually really inhibit um development. Uh, I think in the end I'm landing on uh and and after hearing everybody's really thoughtful opinions and staff recommendation that I I just want to say that I I uh agree with staff's recommendation for the half acre uh um limit. So with that, at this time, is there any other comments or um do we have, do we have a motion or do we just move on without a motion?
That's the question.
I agree, yes. So if anyone has a motion, I invite them to make it now. Otherwise, we will move on without a motion and um have staff s- let the commission know that we talked about this and thought a lot about it. Commissioner Kaiser.
Uh, actually, I'll I'll defer to Commissioner Frye.
Commissioner Frye.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaiser. Uh, I would like to motion that uh we recommend engrossment for this uh portion uh to exempt up to two acres.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Commissioner Kaiser.
Uh, whether two acres is right, one acre is right, whatever it is, I, part of the discussion that I wanted to bring up that I think is important is if we go back to the, to the uh graphic that we just had, I apologize. Uh, if you can go back to that for a sec. When we look at this and it says average percentage of lot covered by significant habitat, thirty-six percent. So if, let's just take a square acre, one acre, and think about, okay, thirty-six percent of that has a restriction now on it, not not a development prohibition though. I want to be very clear about that. So thirty-six percent here, ten to fifteen percent of it will be lost in roads and or uh water quality facilities, depending on how that develops out. Sometimes it's, it's a swale, sometimes it's lidas, it just depends, right? There's, there's a portion that's lost by those public utilities. So when you look at it from that perspective, let's just say it was ten percent.
Before point, point of order, sorry to interrupt, Mike. Do we have a second? Is this, is this deliberation or do we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, from that perspective, that would be forty-six percent of that property, whether it's an acre, two acres, ten acres, doesn't matter. In that particular case, I think what it's demonstrating is what Commissioner Will or uh Commissioner Frye was pointing out, which is i- there are other considerations beyond just that thirty-six percent and they're in different spots in the land use process that do whittle these properties down and make it very difficult to develop them in the future. And I think that the the group that gets squeezed is this very small lot group. It's not um, it's not the the ten acre site, it's not even the five acre site, right? It's it's two acres, one acre, that area. So that's for me why I I'm seconding the motion.
Commissioner Will.
Um, I I I agree with uh um that example that if you look at one acre and you think what is thirty-six percent of one acre? If that, you know, represents a typical lot in this this lower range, um uh, then you have the the remaining acre, an acre is four forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So the remaining um, you know, s- you know, sixty-four percent of the lot is is not covered by a significant habitat. So someone uh could develop um that other part and that that area is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight point something square feet. Um, and so I just want to point out that um, you know, lots in this one acre and lower range, even if thirty-six percent on average of that that acreage is uh covered by habitat, upland habitat, um, there's still twenty-seven thousand square feet not impacted. Um, and uh so I I I disagree that we're taking away um, you know, land that could be developed. Uh, you could develop that twenty-seven thousand square feet into two lots of of over ten thousand square feet each. If I'm not mistaken, uh, you know, you could build, you know, multiplex on each of those lots. So I I'm thinking that um the the concern expressed of making it harder for developers to develop. What what is making it is is it's harder for developers to develop in that thirty-six percent. But if they choose to develop outside of that thirty-six percent um on the land that's that's the other two-thirds, um, you know, it won't be that burdensome. So I I'm not in favor of the motion.
If there's no other deliberation, uh can we move to a vote? Oh, Commissioner Frye.
Thank you. Uh, I think it's it's important again to point out that all of the rest of the impact of the, Commissioner Kaiser went through it very well, all the rest of the impact that takes place on these different parcels. It's not just the thirty-six percent you're talking about having limitations to it. Um, and then most of these will have an existing structure on them. So you have to remember the value or the placement of the existing structure. Um, it's just, I guess, as somebody who's looked at uh these projects for years and years um and gone through feasibility on these small projects, I I can tell you, just the the reality is that these smaller, smaller parcels are just not going to be economically viable for development if if we don't modify these carve-outs. And it's not just my, my personal experience with that. Um, this is why we've had other public testimony or the, or the Home Builders Association, uh Home Building Association, excuse me, um, has submitted um recommendations based on this as well. This is just take it, I mean, it's it's the experts at development that are telling you how it works. And I understand that it's also as an expert of development that there's a questionable interest, right? Because that's how development community makes their living. But have to remember that they're the ones who actually do this all day and are telling you, by doing this, if you don't make an adjustment, most of these parcels are not gonna be economically viable for development. We're not gonna have housing in them. We're gonna need that housing somewhere else. And that that housing elsewhere comes at its own different cost and expense. Again, talking about infrastructure, existing bus lines, existing schools, um, all the existing roads. All these, these areas are usually fully developed around. Um, and they're just, they're just ready for the development to take place versus going and saying, well, now we're gonna have to sprawl out somewhere else.
Thank you, Commissioner Frye. I think we've heard a lot of good um discussion on this. And I think we need to move on or we're going to be here until nine o'clock. So can we, can we do a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Yes, um, okay, Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
No.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
No.
Commissioner Whips?
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maury Bdu?
No.
We have four in favor and three opposed, so the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, for all the thoughtful discussion. We appreciate it. Um, and also hope that we can run through these others quickly. Um, so I am going to turn it back to staff. Thank you.
So the next topic is about uh type-one tree permits. Uh, the uh the intent for this um uh exemption is to allow a simple permit process for people to provide a limited exemption for tree removal to accommodate a residence. Oops, sorry. Oops. Sorry, I was on the wrong, wrong, wrong thing. Um, so I want to kind of go over the issues that were raised um through the type-one tree permit provisions. Um, there are several issues with the standard, one being the size of the disturbance area for lots within an existing dwelling above the current proposed five thousand square feet perimeter. And then the tree removal distance from existing buildings above the current proposal of uh ten feet. And the third one was allowing trees um proximate to a wider variety of buildings, not just habitable buildings, to qualify for removal through the type-one tree removal permit section. And then there were some issues surrounding the definition of habitable. So the purpose of a type-one tree permit allows for a disturbance area around existing habitable buildings. The intent was to provide a limited exemption for uh tree removal to accommodate existing house footprint and related outdoor paved areas and possibly accessory structures. A larger perimeter area um would uh exceed the intent of the simple and narrow type-one process um that we've established. Um, and then other land use processes under a type-two, other land use processes are available through a type-two process um are found in section four twenty-two and those are available for people to do more extensive development perhaps or remove more trees on their property. So there are options available aside of this type-one tree um exemption. And the intent of the habitable building was to limit potential for owners to use existing small structures um to remove additional trees in the significant habitat areas. So should the planning commission choose to be concerned with any of these topics uh related to the type-one tree permit provisions, it could recommend one or more of the following. You could increase the size of the disturbance area. Um, two, you could increase the tree removal distance from existing buildings, that perimeter, the the ten-foot perimeter. You could allow trees proximate to a wider variety of building types, not just habitable buildings that would qualify for a removal through a type-one tree removal permit. You could change the definition of habitable um to include essential services, which uh, which is the uh staff recommendation. And so then I'll um pause again here for your uh discussion and deliberations.
Thanks, Michelle. Uh, let's start with uh the first uh item, uh the five thousand square feet, because I think if we do all four of them at the same time, it could be a lot. Um, so uh uh planning commissioners have uh questions, comments? Let's go ahead with the five thousand square foot. Um, Commissioner Frye.
Uh, I had recommended a ten thousand square foot adjustment. Um, I think five thousand square feet can feel pretty tight. Um, when you start talking about the size that trees actually, you know, the scale that trees actually grow into. Um, and I know we heard a lot of uh community input and testimony about the concerns of, uh, you know, a large tree can uh can fall and and do a lot of damage and five thousand square feet doesn't really protect you. And a healthy tree can fall. It's not just diseased trees, which I understand we have some exceptions for. Um, so to me, I think five thousand square feet is gonna um be pretty limiting. Um, and I'll stop with that. I have comments on the others, but I'll stop with that.
Commissioner Will.
Thank you, uh Vice Chair, uh Action Chair. I a- I agree. That was exactly my comment is I think uh with the concern about some houses are are larger, some houses have uh structures. Um, I think ten thousand square feet seems more reasonable. Perhaps um someone could argue um that you might have four structures together uh that by themselves have more than ten thousand square feet. So I do wonder if there's some sort of caveat is like, you know, ten thousand square feet or um, you know, all the built, existing buildings on the site, whichever is greater or something, you know, so.
So, but that, that maybe is something for discussion.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Just point of clarity from, from staff. If I remember correctly, the idea was this was a, would be a 5,000 or 10,000, whatever it is, but it would be a rectangular area around, or would it be more of an abeba? Is that, okay. I just couldn't remember which one it was.
A polygon, I think.
Polygon, okay.
And you could, that would be the total that would be on the sites. So if you had, if you had 3,000 square feet already, you could put it in.
In, in here, in here, in here. It doesn't have to actually be.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
It has to be one polygon.
A contiguous area.
But you could add, but you could add, yeah, like you could.
Later. It needs to be contiguous, but it does not need to be a rectangle. It could be in a regular shape. So it does have to connect as a single polygon, the way the wording is now. It could be, yes.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
It doesn't specify the, the shape of the polygon.
Additional comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I, I would move engrossment at 10,000 square feet instead of five.
Second?
I would second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Will? You're, you're on mute.
Thank you, Chair. My question was just, this is only on number one, so we could talk about two, three, and four still, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question about where the 10,000 number came from. Commissioner Frye?
That's, that's a fair question. I just kind of started to think about how big of an area when you stand in that, how big of an area that feels like. I started to think about tree sizes and the amount of space that somebody might have. I thought about the type of use somebody might have that they're, they're hoping for on their property. Because this is, you know, potentially limiting, or it would be limiting somebody's use of their, their personal property for outdoor use, whatever it might be. I really, I thought about the public testimony we received. And that was just kind of the number that made sense to me. I don't, I, yeah, beyond that, I don't have a, like a mathematic. I didn't go and measure heights of trees and stuff, but it just felt like it accomplished providing a limitation, hearing the public feedback, and then allowing people to have some kind of, what to me seemed like reasonable use for their, their land. We hear a lot of people complaining about new development, how small the lots are. And staff used, they had to kind of pick a number too. They used a number that kind of felt like a typical new lot size. And to me, if people complained so much about how small the lots are, I felt like maybe we should have something a little bit bigger and we're considering this.
Staff, do you have any input? I, you don't have to.
We don't. It is, it's a policy choice. And, yeah, it's a policy choice.
Just personally, I wouldn't feel comfortable suggesting a specific size that goes against what staff and experts have recommended. But I would not be opposed to the commission taking a deeper look at this based on, you know, the community input we've already received. An additional community input that I'm sure we will receive between now and their meeting. So that's where I stand. Commissioner Will?
I wanted to address that, that issue of like where I came down at 10,000 was also due to community and as well as some questions posed by the planning commissioners of, you know, sometimes you might have a shed or a barn. And the intent was, you know, this polygon, you'd want to be able to draw it around all your outbuildings. And so, you know, it's a standard lot of 5,000 square feet with a house may not have a barn or a shed. But, you know, somebody who has a larger property and has a barn or a shed, they're going to want to get that polygon around that and still have room for a yard, like a normal house. But so that was my intent for doubling it, was to give that exemption here to allow that polygon to go around additional buildings, not just the habitable space. That's my, that's my thought.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
I just wanted to re-clarify that above 5,000 is still buildable. We just have a type two process.
That's correct. Right. Or if you remove 10 trees or fewer, you just would need to replant trees and this is native or. If you, if you, you could do the type two process or you, which would also include if you remove 10 or fewer trees and replant the trees, that would also be another kind of option aside from like the tree inventory and points. So there, there are other options for, aside from the type one process. Doesn't mean you couldn't remove the trees. It just means you have to follow the other sections of the, of the code rather than this simple process for the exemption.
Commissioner Frye?
Thank you. One of the other, I guess, clarifications for why 5,000, I guess, felt insufficient to me was that if you just call it a 50 by, I know we can, we can make the polygon whatever, whatever kind of size we want within or dimensions we want within that square footage. But if you think about a 50 by 100 space, which was kind of the general lot size that was being considered there, to me, it just felt like the, the risk of trees within that zone was substantial because it's not a stretch of the imagination to say that a tree in that area falling would easily find its way to, to hit the house. And at 10,000 square feet, I just felt like there was a little bit more, little bit more room for providing that safety for the existing structure and the occupants of the home. And then honestly, I stood in my own yard and I live in an older, older neighborhood where the lot's a little bit bigger. And I kind of looked around and I said, okay, that's about how big my lot is. And if I thought about how somebody would be using a space or, or the types of things they would want or having a, like a lawn area or a patio or things like that, it didn't, suddenly it didn't feel like a large space to me. If you started saying that you had to retain all the trees in that area, it, not all. If you had to retain more trees in that area, or you were limited to what you could do with that area, not only with the safety concerns, but the, just that standing there and feeling the size, I just, it felt like a reasonable number to me. It wasn't totally abstract and random. There was some, some thought behind it.
I was just going to clarify just a couple of points. One, again, we're, we're all picturing, I think, a lot that is entirely encumbered by upland. This upland habitat designation, right? So obviously this does not limit, if somebody has upland on 36% of their backside of their lot, where it backs up to a riparian area and there's an upland area adjacent to that and that's on their property. This doesn't, this is only, the limitation, of course, is only on the part of their lot that is subject to the, the upland designation. And so I just want to make sure that was clear. So there aren't, that, I, you know, again, I don't know how many lots we have that are entirely encumbered, but there, I don't think there are many. And then I think the other thing to think about is that the, there is a separate exception and it is a true exception. It doesn't require a type one that is for hazard trees. So if there, this is not necessarily, when we were envisioning this type one permit, it wasn't to necessarily address hazard trees because we recognize that those could be 50 feet, 60. They could be anywhere on the, on the lot. And, you know, it isn't necessarily going to be within a polygon. So if somebody has a hazard tree that they need to remove, that, that might have to happen outside the, the polygon that is this. This was meant to create an opportunity to, say, with, you know, you've got your house and your barn and you want to add an ADU or something like that within a disturbance area. So you're not limited to, the other exception is limited to existing habitable buildings, not, doesn't apply to sheds and things like that, but to habitable buildings. And it gives you a buffer around those. This one is, hey, I've got, I want to have the opportunity to create a new space and I want to remove trees in this area to create a new development, development. So just to be clear on, you know, again, it's, it's applying only to the, the part of the site that's, that's the upland area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Thank you. Because I don't feel comfortable, like you, adding or recommending a different volume. We've, we've been talking about this for months. My clarification, we've gone over it before, but I wanted it to be part of this conversation. If we're at 5,000 and as a homeowner, I wanted to go to 7,000, I go through a type two process. What would that cost and that process look like to get up to 7,000 or 10,000?
Well, I'm, if you were removing the trees, to simply remove the trees, so it's a, you just want to, you're not coming in for another, like one, you're not coming in for enlargement of your house or some other reason. You just want to remove the trees. I think that permit, tree only type two, the fee has not been established yet. That's something that staff is thinking about and working on. And so it's a good question. And I think, you know, again, it's, if you're following the clear and objective standards, it should be a relatively easy review by staff and a relatively easy process for you to go through. If you said, no, I'm not happy with that. I want to follow the type three. I, I can't imagine why you would do this. But if you said, I want to follow the type three option that's available to me to do a detailed environmental report, obviously that process would be available to you. I can't imagine why you would do it, but you could. And it would clearly have to be more expensive because it would take more time both on your part and then on the staff review side as well, because it's a much more complicated approval criteria. So I think the pricing is going to depend whether you chose the clear and objective path for a type two, the canopy approach for a type two, which would be potentially another option available to you, or the detailed environmental review approach. So let's assume you're following the relatively straightforward, clear and objective approach. Again, staff hasn't set fees yet for that and I'm sure they'll be working with the board on that. I probably should let TreeSet speak to that more specifically if you've made any.
We have not.
Okay, yeah.
But it would, our, our fees are intended to be full cost recovery. And so I think we, we have been talking about looking at a different, a different fee just for the type two tree removal because it would be less than our typical type two review, which includes a whole, say, a land division and everything associated with that. But, but that hasn't been done yet.
I'm leaning towards not trying to change the 5,000, but to make a recommendation that those decisions, that information is either defined clearly by the time you get to the board or an evaluation, that the board is aware that we're concerned about the 5,000 and, and they should give it thought. But I don't think that it's something I want to recommend a new number.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. So I think we should go ahead and, and vote on that and see where that lands and then, if it's appropriate, yeah. If there's any, any more discussion on new, new information, I invite that now. If we've already kind of gone over the arguments, I think it would be appropriate for a vote. Commissioner Frye?
I'm just curious if there, I'm hearing kind of that assigning any number, any square footage is a concern. I'm curious if there are people who fall somewhere in the middle that maybe it's not 5,000, maybe it's 8,000, maybe, I don't know. I'm just curious before we vote if we should maybe amend it.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
For me, there's not a magic number. I think I'm struggling with a change. I'm, I, I really, again, really rich conversation and appreciative of the perspectives and skillsets here. And I, I look forward to, I hope, sharing with the staff, sharing with the commissioners that this, this was a concern and this is something we definitely heard a lot from regarding, from the community.
Commissioner Will?
I think the staff's response was very interesting about a property that say that maybe only the rear 36% of the property is encumbered. And so you can get a, a 20,000 square foot polygon around your house and buildings and not even touch the area. So I think the, the intent of my support of 10,000 square feet was more for those properties that are not marginally impacted, but that are fully, you know, maybe 99% or, you know, 100% of their property is in the habitat area. And they can't even cut down any trees around their houses and, and farms because of that. So, you know, I support this, this motion. You know, we could amend it as maybe suggested to just say, we, we engross it to encourage an increase of that number. But I think my, more importantly for me is if, if any property is encumbered by the, the habitat designation over 50% of the property, then I would want that property to be able to have 10,000 square feet. I wouldn't want that property to all of a sudden feel like they couldn't remove trees around their barns and their, their houses because 5,000 square feet is so little. So I think the staff's point was good that maybe, you know, 5, 8, 10 doesn't matter when you have a 25, 20,000 square foot portion of your property not encumbered. But when you all of a sudden get a, a, you know, most of your property encumbered, it's all of a sudden starts to feel like 10,000 square feet is reasonable. So, you know, I, I support either what we have on the table. You're removing the number and just with an amendment to their motion to, to, to be just increase it please. Or a third option is, is like, apply 10,000 should the property be encumbered more than 50% by, you know, by the, the zone or the overlay.
Commissioner Kaiser?
I, I think the hard thing, and you guys tell me, is that, you know, when you, when you try to, to make that decision where you're going to change it based on encumbrance, you're now losing clear and objectivity, correct? Am I right about that? Or, or would that be your assessment?
I think that we can, we can clarify that it's, what I'm, what I'm hearing is like a bit of a sliding scale. So if the, you know, amount of land outside the disturbance area, you get 10,000 square feet. If you have less than this amount of developable land, otherwise it's this amount or none or something. I mean, I'm sure we could find a mathematical, will only, might make the code just a little bit more complicated. However, I'm sure we can find a mathematical way to accomplish that if, if that's the.
So that would be a clear and objective because it's mathematical?
I think we could make it so. I mean, I have seen that done before and, you know, I do think we could find a way to accomplish it, if that were the direction to do that, where you wanted to exclude portions that are not within. And again, I think we'd want to say not in the riparian area or.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right, obviously. Okay.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
I guess I'm just, I'm struggling with making this higher because as we've stated multiple times, it doesn't mean you can't cut down a tree. It means that there are rules. So for me, the 5,000 makes sense. I certainly appreciate what we've heard from, from community members and I imagine the board will hear the same things. But I, I'm not swayed, I guess.
I think let's do a, let's move to a roll call vote. It's, it's okay. Increase to 10,000, yeah. And at this point, you know, let's, let's just vote. It's okay if we don't all agree. And see where we land.
Thank you. Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
No.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
No.
Commissioner Whips?
Yes.
Commissioner Will.
Yes.
Vice Chair or Acting Chair Maury B. Do.
No.
We have four in favor and three opposed. It passes.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to subsection two of, which is direct staff to explore opportunities to increase the tree removal distance from existing buildings above the current proposal of 10 feet. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Frey.
This, this may be less of a concern with, with what we just voted, but to me, this one, I felt like it should be 20 feet. And that was really related to my concern of root damage to, to structures. 10 feet, you could definitely have three roots that will cause damage to the house. 20 feet, probably starting to get clear of that. I don't know, I'm not an arborist, I guess, but from what I've seen, usually 20 feet's going to be a lot safer than 10 feet. And I'm not sure what's, how staff would weigh in on what, if that, if that becomes a hazard tree, if it is starting to have roots that are causing problems or not. So if that's a hazard tree, then it doesn't really matter to me if we have a, a change. If that's not a hazard, to me, it feels like 20 feet just to protect people's homes.
The definition does include to property damage, imminent danger to property.
Yeah, trees that have a structural weakness that presents a foreseeable danger of inflicting injury to people or damage to vehicles, structures, or development such as sidewalks or utilities. So that's how hazardous trees are defined now.
Well, it wouldn't really be a structural weakness, though, if it was a root from a healthy tree, just taking out the foundation of a house or going through their sewer or whatever it might be.
Right. I think, yeah, I think the tree has to have a structural weakness. It wouldn't be that the tree was causing a problem to the building. Is that how, what you're saying? Yeah.
I think that's correct, right? I mean, in this case, the tree has a structural strength, right, in that the roots are strong and impacting the building. So I think it doesn't meet that definition. We can, I mean, obviously, another way to approach this problem would be to ask, recommend that we look at that definition and take into account root damage and things like that as a part of the hazard tree. So if that, you know, that's, again, you don't have to write that language today, but if that is perhaps a better solution than changing the 10 feet, then I think, you know, you could, you could certainly provide us with that direction. We did look at larger numbers than 10 feet, I would say. And of course, if you can imagine, you know, it becomes exponential as you look at a 1,600 square foot building, and if you go 20 feet in all direction, you know, it is, it pretty much becomes, you know, a fairly large area of disturbance. So that was one of the, we were thinking about that in conjunction with the 5,000 and keeping those in balance. I, you know, again, I'm just, just sharing with you where we came from with the, the 10 and the 5, and thinking about kind of typical building footprints and the, you know, as you look at expanding that footprint with 10 feet around it versus not. So that was a little background on that. We did look at, look at different sizes, of course, and do the math on those.
Commissioner Will.
Thank you. I, I have a question for clarity, and it kind of relates to the 10-foot, you know, and a clear and objective. I know you do like a tree survey, you know, you can't put your survey marker in the center of the tree trunk. You have to put it sort of to the side or something. And of course, different types of trees have different types of root flares, like, you know, a, a, a big leaf maple, you know, might flare out at, at the base of the tree more than, say, Douglas fir, which looks a little bit more like a telephone pole. But sometimes Douglas firs can also have quite the big root flare at the bottom. And so, you know, in an Oregon, we have a lot of very, very large trees, right? So 10 feet seems reasonable when you're thinking about a little, a little plum tree, you know, that was planted as a landscape ornamental tree. But if you have a big leaf maple that's got a four, four-foot diameter trunk, the root flare is probably 10 or 15 feet, you know? So I'm really curious in terms of how the staff intended the 10 feet to be measured. Was that from the face of the foundation to the first, you know, above-ground root flare? Or was that from the base of the foundation to the center of the trunk?
We have measurement methodologies where we talk about the, the way that trees are measured in the clear and objective section. You raise a really good point, though, which is that that definition for tree measurement doesn't necessarily apply as it's, I mean, there isn't a cross-reference to that in the, in the type one code section. There probably should be, but there is a measurement methodology in the code that should, and that's a good catch, it should probably have a cross-reference to that measurement methodology. But it talks about impacted trees and how you measure when you impact a tree. And I was, you know, thinking that we were reusing that when I was writing it, but I didn't, I should have included a cross-reference to it.
Yeah, well, that, that goes, goes to the effect of existing dwelling. If, if the drip line of the tree is, let's say, 17 feet from the center of the trunk, well, the house is currently affecting the drip line, you know? So I, I, I think it would be wise to, to, to think about the idea Commissioner Frey has suggested 20 feet, because, you know, even the largest tree, if, if the measurement is from the center of the trunk, you know, even some of the largest urban trees aren't going to have a trunk, you know, wider than six or, you know, eight feet. And so you have, you know, from the center, four feet, one, three or four feet in one direction, and, and then you have the root flare, let's say, is seven more feet or, you know, 10 more feet. So you've got about 12 or 15 feet till, you know, the end of the root flare. And so you, you know, having a 20-foot distance from your foundation is totally reasonable. Choosing to take a tree out that is, is 11 or 12 feet from your foundation, you know, is totally reasonable when you think that that, that root flare may be, you know, affecting your foundation. So unless, unless the measurement is, is to the first above-ground root flare, you know, somebody takes a photo and measures from their foundation to the flare and shows that it's eight feet, you know, and I can take out that tree even though the trunk of it is at 13 feet, I, I think, I think 20 feet is a good measurement if we're talking about from the center of the trunk, at death, at, at breast height, approximate center of trunk at breast height, measure to the foundation 20 feet. I think that's a good engrossment.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Commissioner Will, I appreciate that. That actually helped me a lot. I, I did want to talk about, usually I prefer empirical data, but in this particular case, just doing what I do professionally, we see a lot with existing homes and new construction where trees are left, especially in particular fir trees, big Doug fir trees. They're tippy, and they tend to go over, and they're catastrophic when they go over, right? And in those scenarios, that's the, one scenario that bugs me about the 10 feet is, is that. Now, I don't know that 20 feet solves that either, and maybe there is no way to solve that situation. I just know that's what gives me pause on the 10 feet, is that it doesn't feel like a secure halo, but I don't know for a fir tree whether that would be, right? I mean, they're so tall that who knows? I, I'm less worried about a, a 12-foot maple than I am a 50-foot or 100-foot fir. So for me, anyway, this one tends to be less empirical and more, I don't know, heart-related, safety-related.
This is questions and, yeah. You can do both, since we don't have a, an emotion, yeah.
I just wanted to say, we've been asking for an increase in this. We've been talking about more than 10 feet for a while. I, I do support the fact that nothing has been proposed, even though we've been asking for it for a while.
Commissioner Will.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Nope.
May I entertain a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. And, and staff or chair, please encourage me to approve my motion if I get the language wrong, but I would like to move that on this portion of the ordinance, staff, we recommend an engrossment to increase the distance greater than 10 feet and, and, yes, that's it.
Is there a second?
A second.
So the motion is just to increase greater than 10 feet, but not necessarily to spell it out? Is that correct?
Correct.
That was my intention, is to let the, the staff maybe in the meantime, and then definitely the county commissioners pick that number.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Frey.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Whips.
Yes.
Commissioner Will.
Yes.
Vice Chair Maury B. Do.
Yes.
It is unanimous. The motion passes.
So it has been another hour and a half. So I think at this point, I'd like to propose another five-minute break. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, we'll see you at 4:46.
We're better than halfway through, I think.
So the final motion is that we recommend that the board approve it with changes that we talked about, but then they direct us to come back and that they direct this, because those two things are outside of the ordinance and not being on the ordinance. Yeah, so they could bring that up if that's something they're... So that very last one is kind of a confirmation that yes.
I think we can go ahead and start, and if we need him, we'll just take a pause till he gets here.
Okay.
But I think you'd go ahead and start.
Welcome back, everyone. We are now moving on to section B, subsection three, that directs staff to consider allowing trees proximate to a wider variety of buildings, not just habitable buildings, to qualify for removal through a type tree removal permit for the purposes of this section, CDC 422-7.1. Do commissioners have any comments, questions?
I, I was just going to ask if three and four, we're basically considering three and four collectively, right? Because I think it all starts really with the definition.
Let's do that.
And then, or, and then, okay, so section, or subsection...
Should we start without Rob?
I think we can go ahead and start, and if we need him, we'll just take a pause till he gets here.
Okay.
I think you'd go ahead and start.
Welcome back, everyone. We are now moving on to Section B, Subsection 3, that directs staff to consider allowing trees proximate to a wider variety of buildings, not just habitable buildings, to qualify for removal through a type tree removal permit for the purposes of this section, CDC 422-7 dot 1. Do commissioners have any comments, questions?
I was just going to ask if three and four, we're basically considering three and four collectively, right? Because I think it all starts really with the definition.
Yes, let's do that.
And then, okay, so section, or subsection 4 is direct staff to amend the definition of habitable in CDC 422-7 dot 1 dot A dot 1, as shown in the staff report, and to delete the word residential as it is unnecessary, given that it precedes the word dwelling.
So I wanted to ask how we arrived at that definition, the, or the idea of the definition, which was, you know, power, water, sewer, all that. How did we come to that? Was it just, hey, that's an easy one?
I'll jump in. I was looking, as we were, you know, having this conversation about how do we create this standard? And there was, okay, well, wood sheds, no. Sheds, the other types of sheds, no. Okay, so what about, you know, well, of course, we want the dwelling, okay, how, but what if it's abandoned? You know, and isn't, you know, it's basically going to be torn down. Prior to tearing it down, somebody comes in and says, well, I'm going to take out all the trees around it within now some wider distance than 10 feet. Then what would that look like, right? So, and so as we were having that conversation and looking for a clear and objective way to say, well, okay, it might not be a, and it might not be a dwelling, it could be a dwelling, but you know, it, it, it needs to have these features in order to get this benefit. Again, you're, this is just to qualify for this type 1. There are other paths forward as type 2s to do other tree removal in this, in the upland habitat area, you know, through the other processes. So this was just creating an opportunity that was an easier path, kind of meant to be a relatively narrow, not, you know, originally, we'd actually talked about keeping it an exception or an exemption, but that wasn't really, it was too complex for that, and we felt it needed a, needed a permit trail. And so it, it ended up as a type 1. That was kind of the, like, okay, that's the best approach, so that's why all of these are type 1s and not just exemptions. But, that said, you know, it was trying to be clear and objective, trying to capture a set of buildings that had use and substance, I suppose. But it certainly could be, you could say, well, it doesn't need sewer. You know, it could be water and power. You know, again, there's, you know, one could take a, make a change. It's just, it would be helpful if it were measurable, important that it be measurable, and something that
is easy for staff to interpret.
And verify at the time, because again, a type 1, they're meant to be, you know, quick and easy, so it needs to be something that's easily verifiable.
Commissioner Fry.
I had asked a question to staff, and I'm not sure if you all have come up with the answer yet. My, my question on number four was if sewer is, if the definition of sewer by default includes septic, because to me, I always think sewer is a public system and septic is not sewer, but I don't know if that's a narrow view and if, if I'm wrong. But it would be important to me if we're going to find habitable, that a septic would still count.
Really good point, yeah. So making sure we're clear that it's wastewater? And not just, okay, yeah, I think that's a good clarification.
Commissioner Will.
I have a couple of questions for staff. The habitable buildings language, so that's currently part of the ordinance, or was that added late and it's technically a staff recommended add? Or is it already in?
The term habitable buildings is in the ordinance. The definition is not yet, and so this came up when I think some of our current planning staff looked at that, and they're like, what do you mean by habitable building? It's not defined in our code, and so it would be good to have a definition. So that's where this all came from.
And we, that started us looking at the definition of habitable building in the building code, and of course, or habitable structure, and that wasn't appropriate, given, you know, so as we looked at that, we were like, wait a minute, that would be the default that they would look at, but that doesn't actually make sense in this context, which is why we said, well, okay, for the purposes of this section specifically, we want to craft something that
Right. I remember, I remember this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So the reason I asked that question is because I believe the reason why we ever needed to clarify it was because of number two, we were trying to have a 10-foot around habitable buildings. Am I wrong? Is number two in this list of four on the slide, the 10-foot rule? That was, that was suggested by staff that that 10-foot only applies to 10 feet around habitable buildings.
Right, so it was that that was to protect existing buildings, and it was meant to say, and right, and so if you said had multiple
A horse barn doesn't count.
Well, I mean
A wood shed doesn't count, right?
A wood shed, yeah. I mean, a horse barn may or may not have these features, and it may have, you know, facilities and running water and hot water and other things like that, depending on the horse barn, but yes.
Because, you know, I just, I just, the reason why I ask these questions is I was thinking like, instead of coming up with a new phrase and a new definition, like, if somebody invested money in getting a building permit, maybe that could be the 10-foot rule, or if it gets increased to 12 or 15 or 20 feet, you know, through our suggested engrossment we just passed. You know, if, if it could just be around any, any building with a building permit, is, does staff have any objection to using that standard instead of the word habitable building?
Well, we talked about that at length, and that's a great suggestion. The reason that we didn't is because there are smaller buildings that might not have necessarily required a building permit, that could potentially have these features. And so we got into this conversation, and there may also be older buildings that we don't necessarily have a building permit history on. And so they would require a building permit if they were built today, but it may not be that the building. So then it just got like, okay, how do we, like, is it a building that would require a building permit today? That required a building permit when it was built? Does it have a building permit? What if it wasn't required when it was built? But, you know. So again, we were trying to aim for, and we can certainly revisit that if that's the planning commission's direction. I think if the, if the concern is that the, the definition of habitable is too narrow, and it's excluding buildings that you all think should be included, we can try not to, in the interest of time, we don't necessarily have to solve that today. You could maybe give us direction. We want to include these kinds of buildings, but we understand or we don't want to include these types of buildings. And we can go back and talk to the building official and talk to others and see if we can come up with something for the board. If you could give us a sense of where you, if you would like to change us, where you would like to change it.
Yeah, I, I kind of remember the conversation going, when we were doing our work sessions, as, oh, you know, a barn with no heat, no electricity, and no sewer, no water, would not qualify for the 10-foot exemption. And, and so to me, I think you're, it's, what you have is fine. It seems to me additive is what was, was the intent of some comment, was is we should add buildings beyond just habitable ones, such as a barn with horses in it, with, with only electricity and no heat. So that would be my thought. And so my, my thought was, is that, so all of the things you, you're currently saying are habitable, keep, but add buildings with a building permit. Where, so that would eliminate things like a tough shed, I assume does not have a building permit, or am I mistaken?
I presumably not. I suppose if it were a very, if it were over 200 square feet, right, it's a very large tough shed.
Okay, yeah. Okay, well, so that's just some of my thoughts. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
I was the one who brought this up in the first place, because on a property, any space for a living animal, either a rabbit hutch, a dog kennel, a barn for horses, goats, that's going to probably be at the farthest distance from the home, just because of, you know, preference of keeping space between the two, meaning the 5,000-square-foot polygon wasn't going to encompass it. And I know most of those are not going to have water, sewer. If, if they have water, great, they, they aren't always going to. Definitely not going to have a permanent heat source. So I would like to make a motion that we recommend engrossing with the recommendation, with the expectation that a mechanism for protecting living creatures on the property. I don't know how that phrasing could work out, but to protect life.
Right. I do wonder about saying something like structures for horses and livestock. I think that that would cover probably most of it. Our concern would be that maybe someone would put a chicken coop in an area and say, oh, I have a chicken coop here now, I need to take down all the trees. So if it's an official structure that is housing
A structure with a foundation.
A barn.
Would it have to be actively housing livestock? Because, I mean, there are many people that build hutsches and things, and maybe at one time there was livestock in them, and then there's not, and then maybe in the future there would be. I, I, it will be very hard to make that a clear and objective standard. I just want to be, you know, I, in a way that staff could implement it fairly, right? Because it's, it would be easier if it were something that were measurable. So if the, if the question, if the thought is, well, water and electricity, right? If it's got water and power, like, it's got a tap at the thing, and it's got, it's got electricity, that's plenty, and that, and, and the commissions might, I mean, that would be, I think, easier for staff to implement fairly than, and I understand the sympathy, but homeowners change, and, you know, some keep animals and some don't, but the buildings may remain.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Commissioner Maury B. Do, could you talk a little bit about the definition you were talking about? I would love to hear that, what they're taking, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, but I don't know it, so.
Okay, so what we were, we had been, what I was thinking about was it's a little bit complicated because it doesn't take into account that habitable, if somebody's actually living there, and otherwise, you know, if it's an abandoned building, this doesn't apply. But if we look at the possibility of utilizing a definition of real property, which is defined in Oregon state code, and also is utilized in the insurance industry to define whether or not buildings are eligible for property insurance. That might be a mechanism to, to measure. The one area that I can pinpoint that would be problematic is that manufactured homes that are not on attached foundation do not qualify as real property. So I think there would have to be some, something in there about habitable as well, but potentially real property and real and, not necessarily and, but and/or habitable, happen, yeah. I've lost track of the order of comments, so. Commissioner Monte Blanco, and then Commissioner Will, and then Commissioner Rosenberg.
If I could just interject, I think we had a motion, but was there a second? I didn't write it down.
I didn't actually make the motion. I said, I'm favoring making a motion.
Okay, there you go. Really excited, okay.
Could we have a rule where it was like the habitable building has two of the four, so electricity, heat, water, and/or sewage, was that the right word? Like, that work?
No. I, I mean, I think certainly, and I would say in most cases, you know, the most frequent, even in barns and things like that, are going to be water and electricity. And so, yes, I mean, if somebody happened to have a building that, I mean, you couldn't have, well, maybe you could, I don't know. So, anyway, I'd have to think about that, whether they could have like wastewater and not have water.
Well, I appreciate the chicken coop example, because you, you wouldn't have water, well, you wouldn't have heat, you wouldn't have
Right, right.
I don't know, I guess I'm just throwing that idea out there.
Yeah, yeah, I, again, if, if the, it sounds, if we could just, if you want to give us just general direction that you want to be more expansive of buildings that are, either have a building permit or are real property for the purposes of insurance, or otherwise, you know, not necessarily having all four of these attributes, and you'd like us to revisit this definition of habitable and come up with something that's more inclusive of not just maybe small wood shed type buildings, but like substantial things that would have value and be expensive to replace, then we could certainly, and again, you know, the hazard trees would still be an option for people, so, yeah.
Commissioner Rosenberg. Commissioner Will.
Yeah, okay, I was on the same point as I, I wanted to make sure there wasn't a motion on the table, but it sounds like there wasn't. I would like to, you know, I'm, I'm in the same boat, I'd like to move to a motion, but I would like to defer to Commissioner Fry if he has any comments before we move to motion.
Commissioner Fry.
Or Commissioner Rosenberg was also next, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I think I'm still down the line a little bit, I don't want to cut.
I think you're up, Commissioner Fry.
Okay, I'll go then. I've been kind of back and forth on whether I raise this question or not, but kind of along the, along the lines of, well, does septic count? I guess on the, the services that are, that we're looking at on number four there, I'm kind of wondering if we need to say something or like, or equivalent services. And I know that when we're kind of, we're focused more on urban areas, but we're also hopefully putting something in place that, that lasts a while and, and things change. So as we talk about, I mean, you can be off-grid in a number of ways, and I think that you could have a, a structure that's very habitable that's not connected to the, you know, the grid per se, or you could have things like composting toilets. And there are all kinds of ways that you would want to make sure you protected that structure in the same way you protected another, so, or equivalent services, something to that effect. And then the other piece to me, as we're talking about these other structures, is doing something to account for trees that pose an imminent or likely risk of damage to a structure. And again, I'm not so much on the little tough shed or whatever, but if you got an outbuilding or something along the lines of my comments earlier, and you have trees that are going to have root damage that, you know, causes significant damage to a structure, obviously hazard trees are exempt for removal or have pathways for removal there anyway. But I think there are other ways that they could pose imminent risk of damage, and I think that those should be addressed regardless of the, you know, outbuilding or not.
I was just going to say, it seems like you've given us a lot of information to go on, and I'm hearing back and forth ideas percolating about getting to where you want to go, and I think that that, it's, we've had a wealth of information about it, so I appreciate that.
So I think at this time, if anyone would like to make a motion, it sounds like what we're leaning towards is, is something that expands the definition to include protecting at least livestock. I would, I would welcome that, that motion.
I move that we recommend engrossing this portion of 902 with the addition of improved language to protect lives of livestock on that property.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving to deliberation, Commissioner Will.
Yeah, may I ask the motion, the friendly amended, to add the, the, the language we talked about? That, not just protecting life, but also that buildings may be connected by other equal means. And, and maybe, you know, any building that has a building permit to, to widen the, the range of consideration for the planning commissioners.
So that could be in your motion, or that can just be kind of So that could be in your motion, or that can just be kind of direction to us as part of what we would look at? So you don't have to, I guess, be as, as specific as that. We do have that, a list of those kind of things.
Commissioner Will, do you feel comfortable with the staff having the conversation? Or would you like it within the motion?
It sounds like the staff doesn't need the motion amended, but I would like to hear during discussion from the people who made the motion second that that's also their understanding, because if not, I would like to, to add it.
I would modify the motion to recommend engrossing this portion with the direction that today's discussions be incorporated into the final proposal to the board.
And I would second that.
Thanks so much for clarifying, yes.
Thank you. Further deliberation? Let's move to a vote.
Commissioner Frey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Whips?
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maury B. Do?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle, last, last section for you.
The last big one, anyway. Hopefully, my battery's not dead. All right, so the planning commission discussed the tree retention and replacement standards in Section 422-9. That's the tree inventory and tree points, clear and objective path for tree retention and replacement. It included talking about assigning the points for certain trees and a general reduction of the 50% tree value minimum percentage for retention or replacement on sites, or whether there should be a smaller percentage on smaller parcels. So when considering these standards and points, we heard from the community a strong interest in giving a higher percentage for certain native trees that are considered a priority species. So we translated that into some bonus points to bolster those incentives for preserving those type of trees, especially oak trees. Also, not all of the native trees over six inches in diameter in the upland habitat boundary must be preserved. We proposed 50% of the tree points for pre-2006 areas and 80% for post-2005 urban growth boundary areas. And those are consistent with the metro standards in the post-2005 UGB areas. There's a limited amount of upland wildlife habitat mapped on privately-owned residential properties that we discussed at length earlier. And staff believes the 50% minimum tree value point, point threshold is an appropriate percentage to balance housing production with the protection of significant habitat areas. Adjustment to the standards and replanting requirements, along with two other discretionary options for upland wildlife habitat, do provide flexibility on these smaller sites. So should the planning commission have concerns with the tree retention and replacement standards in 422-9? It could recommend a reevaluation of the additional tree value points assigned to Oregon white oaks, the ponderosa pine, and madrones. Also, the planning commission could reduce the minimum tree value points percentage for properties located within the urban growth boundary prior to 2006. And then, or, and/or reduce the minimum tree value points percentage required on smaller parcels. And then I will pause here for your discussion.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Just along the same lines, and to move discussion along, I think sort of the, a theme that has occurred today, at least partly, has been relief on smaller parcels. To my mind, I, I want to continue that, that's kind of where I'm looking. I want to make sure that those parcels are impacted less than, than say some other parcels. The one question I had on the, on the point process, please remind me. So let's say I've got a, a white oak, and I go through the process, and I've got to mitigate, let's say that it's tree points, we're 80%, 80 points, and 40 points I've got to replace on site if I remove that tree, correct? That's, that's how it works, right?
The tree value points.
The tree value points. And then those tree value points are based off of DBH, correct? That you're replacing it with?
There are, yeah, I mean, there's, you can count various things to create new points. So you could retain existing trees that are smaller than the regulated tree size, including certain understory trees. And so there are options. And so it isn't just, I mean, it is, there is a DBH element to it, but it's also tree location. You get more points if you replace trees inside the habitat boundary. But you could also, if you felt like that wasn't the right location, you could replace or count trees outside your habitat boundary. So if, for example, you had another oak tree that was not inside the boundary, but it was the same size, you could just preserve that tree, and then it would be sufficient points to remove the other tree. So you, you have, there's a lot of flexibility in how the replacement points are calculated and where you can place, get them.
Okay, and the question I had to go along with that is, I, I see the need for, for additional protection and why you would want additional points on the, the front end of this with, with certain tree removals, right? Obviously, those are trees that are already endangered and, and we're struggling to, to maintain at this point. My thought was, was any consideration given to providing additional points for replacing with that type of tree?
Yes, yes.
You replace oaks with oaks, you get a certain amount of points for that as well.
Yes, there is, you want to, I don't have my code in front of me, but if, give me the exact citation.
Oh, thank you, Teresa.
Yeah, so there's a, in 422-9.6, there's a whole series of additional points. So if you retain existing trees that are at least two inches, but less than six inches DBH, you're going to get a base point, which is an inch per, if they're in the, if they're within significant habitat. But you get bonus points for, again, for the white oak, the ponderosa pine, or the madrone. Let's see, I'm actually reading you the wrong, there we go, sorry.
When you say bonus points, though, you mean bonus points for replacement, not bonus point, not, not the other side, which is the accumulation of points? I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yes, yeah. You do get bonus points for replacement. You get bonus points for with being within repair, in your approximate to riparian area. Because we're, again, trying to encourage that. And then those points, but if you're onsite, but outside the significant habitat, again, because you could, you keep much larger trees, because those were not obviously regulated trees. So it could be that it's a 40-inch tree outside the habitat area, that if you're willing to make that a regulated tree, then you can count those points. Now, they, they don't count as much, they're a half point per inch DBH. So it's a, it's a discounted, but you can keep much larger trees. They weren't previously considered regulated trees, because they weren't in the habitat area.
I just had a follow-up thought. When we talk about trees outside of a, of a habitat area, an identified habitat area, is there any provision, is there any standard that would be acceptable that says, oh, okay, by adding this number of trees in a spot adjacent to where that habitat area is, that it becomes habitat area? You see what I'm saying? Is there that ability? I don't even know what that standard is, to be honest with you. I'm asking, in some respects, what makes, what qualifies you as habitat at that point, right? If you've planted 80 trees in a, in a hundred square feet, and they're all gonna live, then it becomes habitat. So I'm wondering, is there, is that?
Right, so why, so why is it subject to the half, the decrease point value? That's a really interesting question, you know, when we, I mean, and it ends up being a little bit circular.
Yeah.
So I think the, the, we're mapped habitat areas were the focus, which is what we really, you know, the intention and the goal is to encourage people to protect trees in those areas, those were identified as significant. And so the, the point system is meant to come up with a clear and objective way to implement that policy of, these are these areas. We are trying to encourage tree protection in these areas, and in specifically, these types of trees. So that, you know, yes, I guess one could say, well, I'm going to mod, I'm going to do a map amendment. I'm going to expand the habitat area into this area and say, do a, and decrease it over here, and then I'm going to plant here, and now I get the full points.
But I don't think it would be.
It's a little bit circular, though.
I don't think it could be the full points by doing it anyway, because the fact of the matter is, you're replacing existing trees that are established. The whole point is keeping some of those established trees. So by planting a bunch of little ones, again, you're, you're kind of just blowing the process up, right? I get that.
Yeah.
I just, my thought process was, hey, there actually is a potential that I create another riparian, or not riparian area, upland area on my property by doing it, which I hadn't considered before.
Yeah, right. And I mean, if you had another stand of trees, existing trees, that could, would have been regulated trees, you know, they're over the six inches DBH, they're native trees, but they're not in the upland boundary, and you say, well, I, I don't mind keeping those. I'll move the upland boundary over here and shrink the upland boundary, like do a swap. And, you know, that is, it's an interesting idea, and maybe the next generation of this ordinance. That would be, that would be a fun, fun piece of code to try and write.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Further comments, questions? Does anyone have a motion? Sorry, Commissioner Frey?
No problem, I was a little slow raising my hand there. I, my only comment here really is that, based on our prior engrossment recommendation, I'm not, I'm not inclined to make any recommendations for adjustments to this. But certainly, if for some reason the, the Board of Commissioners did not, did not uphold our engrossment recommendation, I would hope that they would make some modifications to this section to further weave small parcels and allow for more development.
Commissioner Kaiser.
I did have one more question for you guys, I apologize. Along those lines, if this is adopted, as is this, this point system, any update of this system, like a change in how points are calculated, would be something that needs to go back through a full process through the planning commission, et cetera, right? Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, so this will be in our community development code, and any changes to our development code have to go through an ordinance process. So provide notice and planning commission and board hearings.
And if I could add one final clarification, I, we did hear testimony about willow and cottonwood. And we did, these are, we're focused on upland trees, and those are, I think, as the testimony was, those are primarily riparian trees. And so those trees within the riparian area are regulated through that process. And just, just to clarify, that if you were wondering why those weren't on the list.
Thank you for the clarification. Personally, I think that the additional tree points assigned to the native trees is important, and also see value in reducing some of the minimum tree points on the smaller parcels. But we haven't talked about the definition of smaller parcel, I don't necessarily want to get into that.
It's under three hours.
So that's where I stand. So just wondering if anyone has.
I don't have a motion, but along those same lines, and what you said and what Commissioner Frey said, I think if the two-acre issue that passed earlier, if, if, if the commission was like, yeah, that's not where we want to go, then for me, a reduction in minimum tree value on smaller lots is, is a viable alternative I would like them to consider in that situation. That's the only thing here. Point system's point system, we're coming up with it, you got to come up with it. It's an objective standard, you got to start with one. Nobody knows what the right one is, right? So ultimately, my only thought is just that, that 50% mark on small lots. If you don't end up with a two-acre deal, you kind of try to maybe drag that down some on the smaller lots. That's all.
Other comments? I did not support the two acres, but I do think that is a good compromise. The reduction in minimum tree value points on smaller parcels specifically. Okay, so are, does anyone have a motion they'd like to, to bring forward?
And that's, it's fine if you don't, you don't need one.
Commissioner Rosenberg, do you want? Am I putting you on the spot?
You don't have to have one unless you want to change.
Right, right.
Okay, well, I will put one out there then. I would like to recommend engrossment of ordinance 902 specifically to reevaluate the additional tree value points assigned to Oregon white oaks, Willamette Valley ponderosa pine, and madrones.
And to, to what end? We would just need to know how you would want them to be reevaluated?
To assign a greater value to those native species.
And a greater value than what we have already?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll provide the second.
Deliberation? Commissioner Rosenberg?
I just want to clarify, are we talking about adjusting the tree value points prior to arriving at the board? Or are we talking about getting it through the engrossment process to get Washington County back in compliance, and then going back and reevaluating and coming back through the process with the new point system?
I think having a proposal for the board to consider a higher point value for these specific species.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frey?
Does, does county staff or, or our consultant, do we have any? Do you have handy what the points were that were already assigned to those? Because they were already weighted and prioritized?
It would be based on the size of the oak, the points assigned there, plus a bonus points of eight points, if it's located in the significant habitat area.
Is it just oaks? Is it eight across the board?
Eight, eight additional points.
But for oaks, madrones?
Correct.
Right, for those three, the white oak, the Willamette Valley ponderosa pine, and the madrone. So the base score of one point per inch diameter at breast height, and then eight additional points if you're one of those. And then two additional points if you are within the riparian wildlife habitat. So the, the points start to really add up.
Yeah, for discussion purposes.
Right, sorry, within 100 feet of riparian.
Commissioner Frey?
For discussion purposes, I would, for, for me, that feels like it's going to really incentivize people to retain those. I could, I could, you could almost make an argument that if you add points to those, it, the more you add, the actually, the easier it could be for a developer to, to be like, oh, I saved that one. So I kind of, I feel like there's a pretty good balance. Again, that's just kind of my two cents on it.
Commissioner Kaiser?
I may, just to be clear, I'm a serial seconder. I, I will second any motion, just so we can have discussion on it, frankly. I, I am uncertain on what the right number is because of where we're at in the process. The thing that keeps coming to me, and I'm only thinking oaks, because that's what I deal with a lot, they are so large in diameter already, most of them, that with the bonus points, it's a lot already. I, I mean, I was more, kind of the thought I had thought about before was, man, with how large oaks generally are, adding the eight really makes it a lot of value. So I, I struggle with, with what it would be if we went higher. But on the other trees, I'm, I'm not real familiar with them and their size diameter-wise. Is there any, I mean, do, do those tend to be as big as white oaks? They're, they're smaller.
The ponderosa pine seems comparable to like a Doug fir.
Like a Doug fir.
And then the Madrone has a, like, a larger base, kind of, right, and then it-
It does one of these.
Mm-hmm.
They're off, yeah, multi-stemmed.
Multi-stemmed, so that could add some dimension.
I think my hangup would, would be on the Oregon White Oak. Um, not because it is actually the one that is probably the most in danger between the fact that there isn't any of them, and it's got a beetle that's killing a bunch of them. But it is so large in diameter, generally speaking, that, to me, that, that would be the hangup. The others, you know, if we wanted to assign 10 to them or something, or, that would make some sense to me. But I also see the counterintuitiveness of that, you should want to assign the most points to the tree that it's in the most trouble, uh, in theory. It just happens to be the white oaks are enormous. So that's why I, I struggle with that. I, I want them protected as well, I'm, I'm not against it. But I don't know, I, I don't know what the increase would be, and I have a hard time voting for it if I don't know, so.
Shall we do a vote?
Commissioner Frye?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Kaiser?
No.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
No.
Commissioner Rosenberry?
Any clarification what we're voting on? Can someone read back with motion?
Uh, the motion is to reevaluate, to increase the points for Oregon White Oaks, Will, Willamette Valley Pondrosa Pine, and Madrones.
No.
Commissioner Whips?
No.
Commissioner Will?
No.
Vice Chair Maury Bedu?
Yes.
We have six in favor, one opposed, or, I'm sorry, six opposed, one in favor. The motion does not pass.
Okay, moving on to, um, Planning Commission recommendations to the board. We have a lot of those already.
So we have one, one more?
Oh, one more thing. Sorry.
I'm sorry. So we had, so we heard from, some of the planning commissioners, uh, had concerns with how the regulations would be ultimately enforced, and how to ensure the newly planted trees are maintained, um, that have been replanted. The proposed standards require installation of new trees and shrubs to meet certain standards, and for bonding, if the installation isn't completed prior to, um, the, uh, development proposal receiving building permits. They also require that the applicant ensure, excuse me, a minimum survival rate of 80% two years after the planting. So most enforcement requirements are in the county code of ordinances, not in the C D C for enforcement. So our enforcement options are limited, but could be further researched and developed, and developed, including increasing fees for violating requirements, um, staff inspection at the time of the two-year, um, two-year mark, or bonding to ensure the health of the regulated trees during the two-year establishment, um, period. So this isn't part of the changes to the ordinance itself, but it would be a recommendation that you could make to the board, should you want to offer, provide them, um, your, um, your direction to them. And you could request that the board direct staff to research and develop options for monitoring and enforcement, including increased penalties and bonding mechanism to better ensure the survival of the regulated trees. So, I'll pause at this point.
Uh, super helpful, yeah, I just want to share that I support this, I, I like the ideas you shared. I also am a big believer in carrot first stick, um, so where that makes sense, I'm mindful that to give, I, I don't want us to give too specific of our recommendation, knowing that we don't understand cost and long-term impact. Um, and I think this somewhat relates to some feedback we've received, and I think conversation we've had here around, what does it look like to help homeowners stay in compliance? Um, so just want to make sure we capture that as well.
Commissioner Kaiser?
To that same end, uh, I want to talk a little bit about enforcement during the two-year period, and then post-two-year period. I think there's a, a cycle that goes on, uh, on residential communities that has been happening for a while, and everybody laments is ridiculous, but we're all doing it, which is, you plant the trees at development, you watch them die for two years, and then right before the bond's up, you replant them, get out of the bond, and then the bond, then who knows what happens to the trees afterwards, right? And, and nobody likes this cycle. I, I can tell you from the development side, they're like, man, I gotta buy those trees twice. That's how they look at it, right? But they're also really struggling on how to keep trees alive, and we're talking about street trees, it's a little weird, it's a different animal, but nevertheless, it's that same issue that we've had, it's not just past two years, it's even in the two years that we're struggling with it. So I would love for, I, I would love to see you come back with these options, and include, how do we deal with that part of the problem, too? Because that's been an ongoing issue for a long time. And I would also like to add, it's not just for homeowners, I want to make sure that we're looking at parking lots if we're doing this, right? We're, we're requiring them on parking lots, and the number of parking lots you drive into, and two years afterwards, the trees are gone, uh, it's a lot. So are we just doing all this for no reason? I mean, the whole point is to get that canopy. So I, I support it, I think we just need to expand it even, and talk about a larger area.
Initial comments? Commissioner Will?
Thank you, um, you know, I, uh, I, I've been quiet about this comment, uh, during the last carry, trying to think a lot about it, because I, I heard staff say that they, that they thought a lot about it, and felt that it wasn't a good path, you know, because a lot of these trees we planted on private property and backyards and things. Um, and, and so, um, you know, uh, the, the possible actions listed on the slide, you know, we're asked staff to research some other options, and, and, uh, um, you know, I don't think, um, we should propose any engrossments today with specific solutions, um, because, uh, one of the things that I, I don't like it when governments in general do, is they create laws that don't have a budget. And, uh, so if, if we require even, even like, like with the Clean Water Services method on a, on a, a stormwater tract, which, you know, they do have an easement over, they can go on to that stormwater tract and fix problems if, if, if the owner of the tract doesn't, um, it still would take staff time to go out there and inspect it, and look at it, and, uh, and so I, I'm not really sure that, um, that I would support any engrossment that would encourage, like, some sort of, uh, monitoring or, uh, follow-up, which doesn't have funding. So that's my, my concern with this. And not, because, so it goes beyond what I think I heard staff say, that, that was one of the challenges, uh, and they might even have also mentioned funding was, is a challenge, but, uh, of access, like, you know, the access can be solved by forcing the developer to give you a temporary easement over their yard, or something. But I just don't, I just don't see the county actually following up, because there's no funding for the follow-up. So no matter what we do, without a, a process for funding, you know, code enforcement, or, uh, you know, tree inspections, you know, over three and, and six and nine-year periods, that, it won't matter what we proposed today, so. I, I would, I'm okay not providing any engrossment, but if we do, uh, somebody does make a motion to provide an engrossment, I, I really encourage it just to be a suggestion the staff provide some options. And then the commissioners who, you know, have the funding ability to, to back up the, the ordinance with, with money, can decide whether those, those enforcement options, you know, are viable.
Just for clarification, that's what the intention is, to, to do a recommendation to the board, to do some more work on this issue, to just get your support.
As opposed to an engrossment, just to be clear, so we're not-
Yeah.
This, this doesn't have anything to do with the language proposed in the ordinances, it's just additional direction-
Yeah.
-to the board.
Which, like, if I'm on board with staff, I, I just don't want, I don't want any of us to, to think that we should suggest a two-year bond requirement or something specific, this, I don't like that idea.
Commissioner Frye, you had your hand up, um, and it went down, so I'm just checking to make sure that that was intentional.
Yeah, I was maybe going to raise it again, I'm not really sure. Um, a, a comment I have on this is, so, a lot of the riparian areas where a lot of the mitigation takes place currently, um, those are usually, those are, those end up in tracts, and Clean Water has access to those tracts, and what gets complicated for me on this is, this can really, as we've kind of been addressing, can really end up in somebody's yard, um, you know, on private property, depending on how this is done. And enforcement and access to that feels different than just saying, somebody has blanket access to a, a tract that's set aside, um, and the, the process of trying to maintain all of that, and to inspect all of that, it just doesn't feel like it translates directly across, and, um, and it also, I, I raised the concern before, um, it does worry me that when it ends up in somebody's yard, it, this, and this makes it maybe more of an argument for trying to create some teeth for this, but it, um, it makes it hard for a developer who's going to be the one who's on the hook for it, to actually control it. So it's, it's a pretty big burden on the developer to be like, well, this ended up in somebody's yard, and then, but you're still stuck with it, and if they cut it down or screw it up, you're still stuck with it. And how do you put the deed restrictions in place, or how do you deal with that? I think it's just really messy. And I have, I have those concerns or comments, but I don't necessarily have a solution or recommendation from that, that's just kind of my train of thought.
Commissioner Rosenberry?
Yeah, Commissioner Frye, I, I understand all the logic on all the sides about this, I, I understand the cost, I understand the logistics, but I also understand that if we're going to take this time to create this regulation, it's heartbreaking if it never comes to fruition, if, if all of the trees that we've gone through this point process don't come to fruition, and, and don't actually restore any of the habitat. So in the interest of trying to bring us as far as possible, and knowing we can't be that decision-maker, because the board is the only one who can decide on budget and enforcement possibilities, I, I'm looking around just to see if, if we're all comfortable recommending that this be a conversation that gets brought to the board, that we do not make any direction specific, but we do direct that this conversation be taken to them as part of the conversation that they are going to have.
From what I'm hearing, I think we're all pretty much on the same page, that this conversation should continue, but probably not here.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
So keep going. Oh, on, on this, no, I don't think so.
No, you don't need to, because it's not an engrossment.
Right.
Um, so the other, um, the other thing I wanted to bring up was from Chair Lockwood's email, um, and that I also support, is, um, talking to the board about, um, instituting a heritage tree program. Kind of goes along with the, so, Commissioner Kaiser's asking what it means, and for my-
I'll say that again, I'm, I'm not sure what that means, so help me understand it.
Staff, do you want to, uh, explain it, because you can probably do it a lot better than I can?
Well, sure, I can, I can try. Uh, heritage trees would be trees that, um, would be considered important to the community, they could be certain species, they could be based on the location, or, they could be kind of an icon of a, a neighborhood, and promoted by the community in some ways to nominate certain trees to be a heritage tree, and setting up a program where they would receive a certain kind of recognition, and, um-
And some protection.
Pos- possibly, yeah, some, um, so some community, so, there's some heritage tree programs at the state level, and then some have, um, there's some through different cities. I'm not familiar with, um, with it too, too much, I don't know, um, haven't looked into it very much, um, at this point, um, but could be explored more.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
I was just going to say that several of our neighbors have it, I, I'm not an expert either, I think, um, but I, I absolutely support encouraging the commissioners to explore this as an option to continue to protect natural resources. Um, I'm, I'm, because I'm no expert on this, I don't have a sense of the cost, or how it impacts homeowners or what that, so I would, but I want to support that it be explored.
Okay. Any further comments before we move on to the next agenda item?
I saw the quick question.
Let Commissioner Frye go.
Commissioner Frye?
Oh, sorry, um, I'm just, I'm curious if, if, I'm, I don't have anything against the heritage tree program concept, I'm just curious if that, um, belongs in the mix of this, or if that should be a separate, um, a separate endeavor, and I, I kind of lean toward it not, not muddying what we're working on here, and letting that be a separate process, but, um, I don't really know how that would go either.
Sure, I think that, that's what the intention was with, um, this, this section, like, it's beyond the scope of what we're, what we're working on now, um, but we've received comments and from, from people that are interested in the program, and then the commissioners had that, um, have, some commissioners have had that support, so we wanted to bring it to your attention, and we can, um, kind of state something similar to the board, that this has come up through this process, it's beyond the scope, something to consider moving forward.
And, yeah, I doubt that the board would take any action along with these ordinances, but they might ask us to bring it forward when we have our discussion about our work program, um, and have it as a possible, um, topic that they then dive into a little bit more then. So they wouldn't be able to make a decision on anything at this point.
Thank you.
So it looks like Commissioner Kaiser, but, so we still do need the, the final vote on bringing all of these possible, so.
At this time, I invite a motion concerning, um, Ordinance 901.
So we have, we do have some language in two slides?
Yeah, I was going to say, can we get that language back?
So right here.
Oh, okay.
Vice Chair Maury Bedu, uh, question?
Go ahead, Commissioner Will.
Um, did, did, um, did we already, uh, do, uh, Ordinance Number 901, do you mean, and, did you mean 902?
Yeah, so you've done the first one on this slide, um, and then you've done multiple, um, potential engrossments, um, and so now what we would need is a final motion and vote on Ordinance 902, and the, the suggested language would be there, um, with, so this would bring all of the things that you've voted on, it would bring all of those together. So you recommend adoption with engrossment to include all of those items that you've voted on already.
Thank you, Commissioner Will.
Yes.
Ordinance 902.
I move to recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve Ordinance Number 902 with the changes recommended by this commission today.
Second.
Is there any deliberation?
Commissioner Will has his hand up.
Commissioner Will?
Um, I wanted to say, um, uh, I, I think that we should all vote yes, um, even though some of the, uh, engrossments, um, you might not have supported, um, I think in, in, in general, the intent, uh, was to give good direction to the, uh, Board of Commissioners, and so I'm in favor of the motion.
Additional deliberation? We're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Whips?
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maury Bedu?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes, seven in favor.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of minutes. Um, we have two sets of minutes, um, are there any corrections on the minutes from July 24th? Uh, seeing none, without, and without objection, the minutes for July 24th are accepted as submitted. And we also have minutes from August 7th. Are there any corrections? Okay, seeing none, and without objection, the minutes for August- Okay, seeing none, and without objection, the minutes for August 7th, 2024 are accepted as submitted. Moving on to Planning Commission announcements, does anyone, does any Commissioner have something they'd like to share with us at this time? Commissioner Fry?
I just wanted to say thank you to Vice Chair Maury Badoo for filling in today, this was a big one to step into, and I appreciate how you kept this moving along and kept this organized, so thank you.
Thank you. I thought you were going to say thank you to staff, which is why I was nodding my head, because that was a little big.
We can thank staff too.
That was a lot for you, and you did such amazing work, and we really appreciate all of your work and, you know, research and presentations, that was, that was really well presented, well thought out, and I admire your work, so thank you. Okay, are you?
We'd like to send that back to our Planning Commission, thank you so much for getting through this, this is a huge accomplishment today.
Really big, and...
Should have a round of applause, actually, let's do it.
Okay, so at this time, without objection, we are adjourned.